That last minute, right before the time to start the meeting is always the longest minute, and it gets so quiet in here. But welcome, everyone. Great to see all of you here to our special city council meeting of July the 21st, 2025. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We could have our translators, please, come up and introduce yourselves.
I have a brief bilingual message for everybody. Tengo un mensaje breve bilingüe para compartir con todos ustedes. Mi nombre es Regina. Estoy aquí con mi colega Hugo Santos, y seremos sus intérpretes para esta reunión. Para esta reunión se proporciona interpretación simultánea entre el inglés y el español. Si gustarían participar en español, si gustarían escuchar todo lo que se va a decir en español, tenemos algunos auriculares aquí disponibles para hacerlo. Si en cualquier momento quieren aprovechar de estos, pueden alzar la mano o nos pueden encontrar aquí en la entrada o en el salón lateral. También, si gustarían hacer algún comentario en español, nos pueden dejar saber, y estamos aquí dispuestos para ayudar. So, my name is Regina. I'm here with my colleague Hugo Santos, and we are providing simultaneous interpretation between Spanish and English for today's event. If you would like to follow along in Spanish, participate in Spanish, we have some listening devices available for you to do so. If at any point you would like to use these devices, you can raise your hand or let us know. We'll be at the entrance, in the lobby here, or in the side room next door. If you would like to make any public comments in Spanish, you can let us know. We are also more than happy to help. With that, we'll let you get started with the meeting. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, is this working? We will have public forum, and I do want to remind you that the public forum is not about anything, it's not about what's on the agenda. It's about anything else but not what's related. We only have one item on the agenda, so this is time for you to speak to anything that's not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers? Did you, did we not do roll call?
We did not.
Oh, my goodness, can we do roll call?
Yes, of course. Beginning with Councilmember Rayz Martin.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiriyako.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pretempor Casden.
Here.
Mayor Perotti.
I'm here. Okay. So now it's time for public forum.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have 26 public speaker slips.
For public forum?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to make sure that there's not speaking about the item on the agenda, because I will have you sit back down.
Thank you, Mayor. I have not received any speaker slips for general public forum, and as a reminder to the participants on Zoom, if you'd like to speak for public forum, please raise your hand, and we will call up on you. And again, this is for non-agenda-related items. Mayor, I'm seeing one hand raised for general public forum.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew Scher, if you could please kindly accept the prompts you're about to see on your screen, and please remember to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi. We can hear you.
Okay. I just have a brief prepared statement about a nonprofit I've newly incorporated, if that's okay.
Is it about, is it about the item on the agenda?
No.
No, okay. Then you can go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Andrew Scher, UCSB alum, County Parks employee, and longtime Santa Barbara County resident. I am also the co-founder of a newly incorporated nonprofit called KeyStep. At KeyStep, we believe housing is not a means for institutional advancement, it's a community end, a foundation for stability, belonging, and long-term resilience. We support what we call step-ready individuals, people who are interested in homeownership and close to qualifying but held back by systemic barriers. Our focus is on helping them navigate those final steps. That belief feels especially urgent right now, as many of our neighbors face uncertainty, whether from rising rents, displacement, or enforcement fears. In times like these, homeownership can offer lasting security and a stronger sense of place. Our long-term, our, one of our long-term goals is to reduce the churn of working families being pushed out of the area because they can't build equity. The more people that are able to stay and build their lives here, the more resilient Galita becomes. And while tonight's meeting is focused on immediate concerns, the broader message is clear: This community is ready to stand up for dignity, stability, and inclusion. We believe housing plays a central role in that vision, and we are committed to doing our part. If you'd like to connect or continue the conversation, please reach out at info@keystep.us. Thank you for your time, and all the work you're doing to keep the city strong. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers under public forum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm seeing none.
Okay, great. Then we will close that portion, and Mr. Nesbit, do you have any amendments or adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any amendments.
Okay. Then we will open the discussion item. If you could read, please read that into the record.
Yes, that is item A1, Immigration and Customs Enforcement Activities and Consideration of City Council Options Regarding Such Actions.
Thank you. So we will have a staff presentation, Mr. Nesbit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, members of the community. My name's Robert Nesbit. I'm the City of Galita City Manager. I'm going to give a brief staff report, and then I'll turn it back over to the mayor to give the guidelines for how the meeting's going to run tonight. So first, I just want to acknowledge some staff members. We did put this together pretty quickly. We received direction from the council at a regular meeting last Tuesday to hold the special meeting today. So I just want to note that I think all of our clerk staff is here. We have Nicholas and Deborah up on the dais. We also have David, I see, and Blake running around, being helpful and taking speaker cards if anyone wants to speak. So the clerk staff's all here to be helpful. Our assistant city manager's here, a couple department heads are here, and we're involved. I see our community relations, Kelly Hoover, she's here as well. Shannon, in my office, helped. Our city attorney, of course, is going to be here to answer any legal questions. And then the lead on all this was actually our deputy city attorney, Winnie Kai, kind of pulled all this information and did a lot of research over the last few days to get some information for the council, so that this meeting could be productive today. So she's here to take questions as well when we get to that point. I just want to go back to a meeting we had in February. It was February 4th. I think that was right after the first reported ICE activity in the community. And at that meeting, members of the public spoke, and at that time, several of the council members made statements, and I think the community was just starting to get kind of their head around what was going on. And at that point, I made a statement as well that just was kind of the very basic how the city operates and what our initial response is to dealing with members in our community and who our services are for. So just going back to that statement, because I think it's important just to start with that, because today, we're, here we are going further than that today, I think. I want to make it clear that our city is committed to providing services to all community members regardless of immigration status. Additionally, under California Senate Bill 54, that's the California Values Act, law and local law enforcement agencies are prohibited from participating in immigration enforcement except in limited circumstances. City departments will provide services to all residents without requiring proof of immigration status except in legally required circumstances. At that time, we also had our chief of police here. He is also here tonight, Mayor, and I think, once we get going, you're going to have him speak, as well as a couple other featured speakers. So he will also be here to take questions from council and reiterate the point of view of the Sheriff's Department, who maybe most people in this room know, but maybe some don't, we actually contract with the sheriff for police services in the city of Galita, so we're unlike the city of Santa Barbara, who has their own police force. So we have a great partnership, of course, with the sheriff to provide public safety and to keep our community safe. So we'll be hearing from him about that. And then at that time, the direction we received was pretty much about education and just doing our part to get the word out and make sure that we had relevant links on our website, we, you know, the red card we put in our lobbies. So we're still doing all that. That's why Kelly Hoover's here tonight. I don't think that was really alluded to in the staff report, but we're going to continue to do better there. We want to connect people to other people that need to be connected. We want to get people to information. We want to do our part to educate, promote, make sure people understand their rights to the best of our abilities. So as those notes come up tonight, Kelly and staff will be taking notes. We'll try to improve our website, make sure we get links out to people, provide information that people want to, that people need for this issue. So that'll be going on as well. Next, I want to talk about, since February, just kind of also what it meant in our own facilities as we started to get our head around this. So we have several public facilities. We have the City Hall. We have our library. We have the community center, which are public spaces. And questions came up about what do we do if ICE officers come into those spaces? And so we have, on several occasions, got messages out to our own staff and trained our staff about what to do and what not to do in those spaces. And so I just wanted to reiterate that, because that question does seem to keep coming up, not only from staff, council, but also members of the public who use those spaces and wonder what it means if they're at the community center or at the library. So we have made sure to get the word out. Our staff is trained, and if those questions come up tonight about that, what we can do, what we can't do, we'll certainly answer those. And then finally, I'll just turn your attention to the staff report and the purpose of the meeting tonight. So as I mentioned, the council did direct staff to schedule this meeting last Tuesday, and this was in follow-up to lots of activity on the South Coast in the last week. We were witnessing just terrible things going on in Carpinteria, and Carpinteria, the city of Carpinteria, had a meeting, the county followed, and they all had regular meetings where they had conversations like we're having tonight. So the council scheduled this meeting. That gave us a little extra time to put some information together, and I do think that was helpful for us to allow you to run a productive meeting tonight. But the purpose of this meeting is to provide a public forum for community members to voice their concerns, opinions, and proposals, and to determine what steps the city council can take in response to those concerns. That's the purpose, as outlined in the staff report, and we, there is a resolution that we're recommending the council consider and adopt tonight. And then in the staff report, there's actually six action items. I think they do speak for themselves, so I won't go through them at this time, but when we get to that point of the agenda, if there's any questions from council, we'll certainly take those about the six action items that we put forth for the council tonight. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you to kind of go over how you want the meeting to go tonight.
Well, I first, first of all, I don't want to spend a lot of time. I think it's really important for us to remember why we're here and the importance of hearing from everyone and the importance of the folks that could possibly give us more direction on what we can do, what we can't do, and, and it's, it's an avenue for everyone to speak up, whatever you believe. So saying, having said that, I want to say that I want to thank staff. They pulled this off in a relatively short amount of time. So the legal department, our, our clerks, our, all our staff had their fingers in this and had played a role in pulling this together and getting it posted in time. We had to post it on Friday, and then getting the resolution together. So I thank them for seeing the seriousness of this and doing that. So what we're going to do, Mr. Nesbit took a lot of those things I was going to say, but that's okay. What we're going to do this evening is we're going to start off, we have, I believe, five speakers. I don't know if there's more than that, but five speakers that we've invited to come and speak on the situation and their knowledge. And so after each person speaks, so we're going to start with our district attorney. We're going to put you on the hot seat first. And John Savernock, did I get it right? I've been trying, I've been practicing. So, so after he speaks, council can ask questions. I think maybe that might be a good of him. And then we'll get to the next speaker, and when the speakers are done speaking, then we'll go to public comment from the public. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, members of the council. There's going to be a lot of talk about what we can and can't do. Some of my answers may not make people happy, but one of the things we can do is what we are doing tonight. It's what we saw at the county. And the First Amendment guarantees us the right to peacefully assemble, and I cannot encourage that enough, because when we don't exercise that right, much like exercise itself, if you don't use it, you stand to lose it. I am here, first off, to acknowledge the fear and the anger that exist in the community. It's a fear that none of us wanted, but it's a fear that's real. After I spoke at the Board of Supervisors, I went back to my office and was met with one of my victim advocates. She was actually present in the board with another victim advocate. One was born in the United States, one was not. Both are of Mexican heritage. The one that was born here described her fear. She was in tears talking to me about how she goes to the grocery store and she feels eyes on her now that she never felt before. And she has been serving victims of crime for over 20 years, and is employed by the district attorney's office and carries her passport. That fear is real. As a third-generation white male, it would not be right for me to get up here and say that fear is not real. The anger is real about what the militarization of immigration enforcement has, has done to the community, has done to people that believe in our democracy. The anger and the fear that people feel is real, and I want to acknowledge that. But what this situation has created in my sphere, my arena, is some very serious fears. And one fear is that people who have been victimized, people who need help, people who need safety and protection and to have wrongs addressed, will be afraid of coming forward, and I don't want to see that happen. And talking to other county department heads, they have told me about people canceling prenatal medical appointments. My fear is that people will not address their physical health, their mental health, or go to school. These are very serious fears that I have. And I have another fear, as somebody that has devoted their lives to public safety, I do not want to see anything worse happen. If federal agents are armed with warrants, there is no duty but to comply. And when I talk about the First Amendment, I talk about the right to peacefully assemble. When that assembly becomes violent, then there is going to be a response. And it may be a response not by the law enforcement officers that have become, that are members of our community. They will be the law enforcement officers that are operating under orders that have led to the fear. So I want everybody to be calm. I want everybody to be assembled. I want everybody to be loud. I want everybody to voice their concerns. But know this, that those of us in local law enforcement and on the county level under the California Values Act, we do not participate in immigration enforcement. That is not our role, and state law prohibits us from doing so. I can't even tell you how many individuals do not have legal papers to be in this country that I deal with, either defendants, victims, or witnesses, because it's not relevant to what I do. I can't pull that stat, because I don't keep it, because it doesn't matter to me. So anything I can do to encourage you to express your fear, to protest where you need to, but to do so in the manner utilizing the methods and honoring the remembrance of Dr. King, to do so peacefully, I believe our voices. I believe we are right. I believe people that immigrate to this country do so to make their lives better, and they in turn make all of our lives better. And that, and that is what I want to see. I don't want people arrested. I don't want to have to prosecute people. I don't want anybody hurt. I don't want federal agents hurt. I don't want federal, I don't want federal agents threatened either. I mean, it, committing a crime, committing violence to address the violence that is being waged on our community is not the answer. The answer is to stay together. The answer is to keep participating. Those of us in the local jurisdiction, while we do not participate in immigration enforcement, we also can't stop it. Okay? We can't interfere with it either, but we will continue to do our job in the way that California requires us to, and that is with respect for everybody that calls Santa Barbara County home or is in Santa Barbara County.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Council have any questions for our district attorney? Councilmember Kiriyako.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, it's good to see you. I appreciate you showing up for Galita. It's not a surprise, though, because when Old Town needs a cleanup, you always roll up with Galita Rotary, actually help look after our citizens that way, too. So I appreciate you.
I love Galita.
Yeah. So one of the challenges that we face over here is that sometimes it feels like a gap, and sometimes it feels like a chasm, but it seems like there's some amount of space between what we think local law enforcement should be able to do on behalf of residents, on behalf of people that live and work and recreate and love this community, just like you do. And what we're being told can be done to protect the people that live and work and love and recreate and serve this community. And so I'm hoping, you know, we could try and just explore that very briefly. So we've heard, we've heard it said that it's not the, the job of local law enforcement to, to assist in any kind of federal operations. We've also heard that it's not your role to hinder investigations. To borrow a phrase from the 90s, I feel like part of the problem is we don't know what the definition of "it" is. And let me explain what I mean by that. What we keep being told is that if, you know, if, if local law enforcement thinks ICE is here, then they won't kind of get involved in any kind of way. Now, it seems to me that if someone were a survivor of sexual assault, domestic violence, and they reported that there was someone making them uncomfortable, asking them questions, refusing to identify themselves, that you folks would respond in some way, that there would be some kind of response from the local law enforcement community. Someone who has sworn an oath and is a sworn person would come and try and at least determine if the person who feels unsafe is actually unsafe, or if they just have a feeling of not being safe. From your perspective, legally, can you help me kind of thread that needle in whether it's a gap or a chasm? What, in your opinion, do you think should be kind of the rules of the road for how law enforcement makes a determination, makes a finding, that it makes sense to check on someone and see if they're safe, especially if they're reporting it, if they're calling 211, if they're directly calling law enforcement? What should they do?
Part of the problem, and one of the things we're facing, is an information gap. And I understand that law enforcement agencies, be they federal or local, don't necessarily give out all the facts, but we're getting essentially none. And I'm sure we'll get, have comment from officials at actual, at law, traditional law enforcement agencies. But part of the problem with the information gap, the fear and the terror, is the fear that may become real is how do you differentiate between an official that is doing the job that they have been instructed to do pursuant to a warrant or the instruction of their federal law enforcement agency, and somebody that is just seeking to take advantage of people? I mean, we don't know, and I'm certain members of the Sheriff's Department can answer this better, but if, if there is a situation where somebody needs help, and if a law enforcement agency knows that a federal agency is conducting the operation, that the activity that is called is being conducted by a federal agency, then there is not going to be the same level of response. Because, because that is, is, once again, the supremacy clause, it's the federal government doing that. However, if there is uncertainty, if somebody doesn't know, and, and that's part of the fear, how do you differentiate between a masked person that's operating under their official capacity? capacity and a masked person that isn't? And that's when I talk about fear, that people will be victimized when, when there is this great uncertainty or fear. So your question, while valid, is, you know, the line is, does law enforcement have reason to believe that the activity is being conducted by a federal law enforcement agency? If the answer to that is yes, then there probably will not be the response. If there is uncertainty about that, then they are still going to seek to protect the citizens.
Here's the, here's the hard part, or part of the hard part to accept about that. I feel like when there have been questions in the community about whether or not law enforcement knows in advance that ICE is conducting operations in the area, I feel like we sometimes hear, no, we don't, we don't know about it because we don't coordinate with them. Maybe we find out right as it's happening because we need to go in and ensure traffic control or something like that. But then, you know, other times we've heard like, oh, yeah, they gave us a heads up. You know, we don't want to have blue-on-blue conflicts, right? So I feel like, I feel like sometimes in different spaces, we hear different things. What's hard, what's hard about this, and I respect the federalist, the federalism argument that you essentially just made, but if they're not willing to identify themselves and they're really not giving a heads up that they're in the area until right before, why is the default, no, we're not going to get involved unless we're sure? The reason why I'm asking, and I'm not trying to play gotcha, I promise I'm not trying to play gotcha with you, but what is the greater danger? Is the greater danger that someone who is a law enforcement officer, who is just making a reasonable effort to ascertain what's happening in a situation, gets it wrong? Or they don't get it wrong and someone gets mistakenly taken? Or, you know, they don't have probable cause, but then they find something else that they can do? And then it just becomes almost a self-fulfilling prophecy and the person ends up in Santa Ana or Camrio or Point South? So, I mean, where's the line?
Well, again, you're asking me, and I am not a first responding agency. So when there is an operation, I get no notice, because I do have police officers, I do have a Bureau of Investigations, but we are not a first responding agency. So in that, I'm getting no information. So is it incomplete information? Is it always word that an operation is occurring? Is there never? Is it sometimes? I can't comment on that because I get, I get none.
That's very fair.
Yeah, I, I think there, there are legitimate concerns about what process is occurring. Is there due process? Is there any due process? Do people have a recourse? Again, because the information comes out in these sporadic bits, some of which is not real, is some of which can be verified, some of which can't. That is my problem with what's going on, is we are creating a situation that just heightens the fear. There is nothing being done to lessen the fear of the community when, when, you know, people, we hear reports. Whose report is true? I heard from somebody, I heard from somebody. I go in on a warrant to see something, and all of a sudden there's allegations of human trafficking, which as far as I can tell was not occurring. So what is or isn't true? If we had a reason to believe we were getting the whole truth, this wouldn't be as scary and it would be easier to answer the questions. But as far as response, when not, like I said, at the local level, we cannot interfere with federal operations. But as far as what information is being received, I mean, I, I'm not trying to dodge the question, but I get none of the information because my agency is not a first responding agency.
My, my last question, just to follow up on that. In the, it's the nature of your role, you know, not to be first responders, but it's also the nature of your role to make determinations about first responders and whether they're handling situations correctly. There are times where you necessarily charge people that are sworn law enforcement officers, whether they're custody deputies or patrol deputies or other law enforcement officials when they cross the line themselves, right? So you do on some level have the ability to make a determination of this is legal, this is not for our folks, not for the federal folks, but for our folks. So my last question is, do you feel like you have the ability to make a determination whether or not a local law enforcement official is breaking the law if they want to respond to a call from a community member who feels like they're being harassed by someone who won't identify themselves as ICE, but is perhaps portraying themselves that way? You know, we had these First Amendment auditors around that were scaring folks. Is there some way that you could kind of make a call that like, I wouldn't prosecute a sheriff deputy, I wouldn't prosecute a probation officer, I wouldn't prosecute someone else if they wanted to take what they felt were reasonable steps to figure out what's going on in one of those situations? And I promise I'm done.
No, well, again, I'm not dodging the question, but answering in the hypothetical is I will never say I would not prosecute and then put a category of people behind that, because what I will prosecute are people where there is evidence beyond a reasonable doubt that they broke the laws of the state of California. And when we talk about the, you know, when we talk about federal actions and federal law enforcement officers operating under federal law with federal oversight don't necessarily come under state law, but if somebody violates a statute, a California statute, if, and again, it's, it's not, it's not prosecuting somebody for failing to respond or prosecuting somebody for responding, like an incident with an officer involved shooting. It's what they do when they respond that either does or doesn't result in a state prosecution.
Thank you, John. You've been very generous with your time and your answers.
Mayor Protem Kasdan.
Thank you. Two questions. One is, and I think based on your comments, you probably, I probably know the answer, but sometimes there's tales of ICE having warrants and sometimes without warrants. Sometimes they seem to be just fishing in some locations and so forth. Is there any information, any data, anything that'll give us some sort of sense of how often it is based on or backed up by some warrant versus they're just taking advantage and cruising and looking for opportunities?
Yeah, if that data does exist, it has not been supplied to me.
Okay, so we have no idea as far as the conditions for, as far as, you know?
Yes. For instance, if there was some activity of local law enforcement, you could do a public records request. We could look at our stats and, and, you know, I could tell you reasonably, you know, for instance, if it was my office on, you know, several thousand cases of a certain type have been submitted to my office, of those we filed, 58% of them rejected, the other 42% of those, 25% were felony, 70. Yes, I can get those stats, but the information that you're seeking, whether or not it exists, as far as I know, it, it hasn't been made public and it certainly has not been provided to my office.
Okay. And then the other one is, I gather there's a temporary restraining order with respect to, so that right now ICE is able to pursue somebody when there's a reasonable suspicion that there's a violation of immigration law? And I guess I'm just wondering what on earth that means? That is, how does one look at somebody and conclude that they may be violating immigration laws without it just being straightforward profiling? And I guess, how are they threading that needle of just pulling, you know, just arresting somebody because, hey, they're speaking Spanish? Good chance.
When I, when I talk about the legitimate fear and people that believe in a constitutional democracy, being upset with going, about what's going on, your question hits a nail in the head. I mean, I can take you back to over 30 years ago, when I was working at the Reedley Justice Court in Fresno, and there were a bunch of driving on a suspended license cases were set for a motion to dis, you know, a constitutional motion, a motion basically to dismiss. And there were probably 30 of them, and I read them, and I talked to the officers, and they said, well, yeah, we were just parking at the park and we would get anybody that looks dark. And I said, no. And we didn't have to have the motion. I just dismissed them. And now what would happen is that same officer, under now California law, would be subject to decertification. So under state law, that can't happen. Under my perspective of what the law should be, reasonable suspicion requires more than the color of somebody's skin or the accent by which they speak. So I don't know how anything, to me, the only just response was the one the court issued, at least prohibiting it, not necessarily allowing it until it goes on. But I have no answer to that, because under state law, that would not be acceptable.
So do we know, just for, or do you have some sort of sense of what the timeline would be? So a federal judge said this is unconstitutional, stopping people for this. I presume the Trump administration will appeal it? And is there any sense of, because that, you know, the way, I imagine the only, the outcome is going to be the Supreme Court has to say everyone has to carry identity papers, or, or it's, or you can't ask, you know, you can't just arrest people like that? And I get any sense of where that's going to end up? In a year and six months, where we get some sort of resolution?
I, I can't speak to the federal system. I, I have said this on various issues, and I will say it again, I could not do my job in other jurisdictions, because you can only do what I do if you believe in what you do. And in California, that would not happen. And in California, every one of those detentions, every, if there was arrest associated with it, and then a prosecution behind it, would be thrown out of court, because there has to be reasonable suspicion, there has to be probable cause. In my universe, there has to be beyond a reasonable doubt. But at this point and these times, I can't tell you where that's going. I mean, I've devoted my career to state law, and thank goodness, in the state of California, that is not the state of the law.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
I'm not seeing any more questions from counsel, but we may have some later on from the public, if you want to stick around.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, you don't have to stick around for all 26 speakers. You know, I'm going to start off by saying right now, and there's a reason why I don't allow clapping or booing, because I said this at the last meeting and it worked really well, because some people are, you know, we want this to be a safe environment where you can come and differ with some, somebody, what somebody has said. And if there's people booing and clapping, it prohibits somebody else that may want to get up and speak. So we just don't do that. I know what we allowed was this last time, so if you want to do that, so if you could do that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we have our next speaker, since we have no more counsel questions, our Lieutenant Frank Vasquez. He's our chief of police for the city of Galita. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
Mr. Savonok, pleasure.
I know we were back here in February, and really the way, the stance of the sheriff's office remains unchanged. People are a priority, our communities are a priority. So the sheriff's office is proud to serve as a law enforcement agency for the city of Galita. The sheriff's office would like to remind the Galita community that we do not participate in immigration enforcement, including assisting with operations or interfering with them. SB 54, also known as the California Values Act, is a state law that restricts California law enforcement agencies from using their resources to assist federal immigration enforcement. Sheriff's Office is dedicated to serving all members of our community. We cannot and will not fail to provide those core function services of public safety to all members of our community, including undocumented immigrants who live and work within our communities. Excuse me. Our primary focus will continue to be the protection of and service to our entire community. We do not ask questions about or otherwise attempt to determine someone's immigration status. Generally, federal agencies do provide the sheriff's office with deconfliction notice prior to conducting investigations or enforcement, the, excuse me, within our areas. The purpose of this deconfliction notice is to ensure that the local area law enforcement are aware of the outside agencies' involvement within our community in order to prevent officer safety concerns or issues should we receive a call from, a call for service from our community. The activity happens upon them. If our deputies or officers happen upon the area during that, it's important that we know what's going on, and that's one of the primary purposes of that deconfliction notice. They do not provide our office with specific information about the investigation, the enforcement, or the purposes behind their activities, other than they do provide that deconfliction notice in most cases. It's pretty much all I have on that topic, but I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrick.
Nice to see you again, Frank.
Likewise, sir.
Appreciate you being here last time, and appreciate how you handled yourself when we asked you those questions.
Thank you.
So kind of building off something that I asked earlier, and I preface this by saying I, I heard our former chief of police, Rich Brittingham, talk about this issue in Carpinteria. I saw Sheriff Bill Brown talk about this issue at the Board of Supervisors, although I wasn't in person for that one. I suspect you're going to say some of the same things here, so I'm going to try and come at this a little bit of a different way. Kind of building on the last questions that I was asking, I asked a question about what should a person who is a previous victim of DV or sexual assault, who has reason to suspect that a person is approaching her, disturbing her, harassing her, won't identify themselves, but is portraying themselves in some way to be a federal agent, ICE, one of the other DHS organizations? Given that the sheriff's department, the DA, and a number of other law enforcement-related and nonprofit organizations participate in a human trafficking task force, and given that we've seen allegedly examples that have been reported in places like Brooklyn, where someone attempt portraying themselves at ICE attempted to kidnap a woman, and they actually figured it out, what is the line for when law enforcement can just check in? Just say, hey, is everything okay over here? Just ask, can I see some identification? And then I'll be happy to let you perform whatever operations you're legally entitled to do. I'm sorry to have to ask this uncomfortable question, but I also know that you have orders and you have direction that you have to take as well. But can you just kind of help my community? I represent Old Town Galita, where we've had some, some really unfortunate incidents involving, involving ICE. How, how should someone walking down the street feel safe regardless of their immigration status? If someone just comes rolling up in jeans and a t-shirt, but they've got a vest that might, might be a really, a real police vest, or might have been taken from a consignment store, or a, you know, some kind of secondhand vest, like, help me, help me and help my community understand why there's just nothing that can be done if we have any reason to believe that ICE might be in the area that day? Just, if you just kind of help me understand.
Well, Councilmember Carrick, that's actually a really good question and something we get a lot of. Like Mr. Savonok explained earlier, people have a duty to submit to lawful warrant, arrest, whatnot. The question really is, comes down to what, what if there's questions? Make no mistake about it, there are predators out there that are taking advantage of the situation. They're taking advantage of our community. And it's really our job, it's law enforcement, to, to... And it's really our job, it's law enforcement, to do everything we can to keep the public safe. In that instance that you're talking about, whether hypothetical or mere to another real-world situation that people are experiencing, if in doubt, haul us. It's our job to go out there and figure that out, whether that's a deputy responding, whether that's contacting your networks, getting ahold of the agent that we deconflicted with, or who deconflicted with our agency, to figure out what are the terms of that contact, right? In the event that there's an actual crime occurring, we will take action on that, and we'll investigate it. If it's a federal operation and we know about it, there are ways that we can check in on it, make sure it's on the up and up. Ultimately, if we do have predators victimizing our, our citizens, we will take decisive action, and we'll refer those, those reports, those complaints to the DA's office for prosecution. Hopefully, that really answers your question, and as far as toeing the line of what people should call on and shouldn't, if you're in doubt, just call. It's our job to figure out the rest. If it is something that's obvious, then unfortunately, then we'll be done. If it's something that's not so, not so obvious, we'll look into it further.
I just want to touch on one thing that you said. You said, I think you said, in the area? Okay. How, how would the Sheriff's Department, how would a deputy be expected to define the area? Or would this be an example of a call that decisions would be made before it ever got to the deputy through dispatch? Like, who makes the decision of what is the area? Like, if ICE is, if someone says they're being harassed on Hollister Avenue, and the report you have is that there's somebody on Milpa Street, is that the area? Or is that not the area? Is it, like, okay, if they're Hollis, if you hear that ICE is at Hollister and Turnpike, is Old Town in the area? Is it not in the area? Where's the line?
So, speaking to the whole process, the call will get interrogated, and our dispatchers, they do a phenomenal job getting information from people, especially people in crisis. They will basically collect as much information as they can, and that call goes to the area supervisor, or it goes to the deputy. They make the final decision. Those are the decision makers on the ground. The questionable ones, we have a method to go out and find out a little bit more information. But it's been my experience at looking at all the calls and everything we've dealt with to date, they're very specific about where they are and what they're doing, what they're going to be operating in, that area of operation. Sometimes deviations happen. But again, that's where the communication comes in, whether it's us reaching out to them, or them updating us.
Last, last question, because I've got colleagues that I'm sure want to ask questions too. On Juneteenth, June 19th, a federal holiday, ICE seemed to be indiscriminately doing things in the area. There was a man who was waiting outside the Thrifty Wash for a ride. According to the immigration lawyer that I spoke with, the man had no priors, had not been arrested or in any way detained related to a prior immigration-related incident, had never been deported before, was taken from the street, went down to Camarillo, decided he didn't want to deal with this, just signed away his rights, and was deported. So, was, was the Sheriff's Department aware of the operations in Old Town Galita and what was happening on June 19th, to the best of your knowledge?
I'm not aware of that one, but if you're looking for specifics to that operation, unfortunately, we'd have to go through Homeland Security or ICE, their PIO. They don't provide us the details. When they tell us, we're going to be in this area, and we're looking for this specific thing, that's all we get.
I, I would appreciate if you would follow up on a couple of things specifically. One would be the reports that they were at 7-Eleven, although I talked to the person working at 7-Eleven, they said that they never came in. I think they were near the 7-Eleven. The, the folks that were picked up riding their bikes into Kitsin Landscaping on that morning, the folks that got, there were two people, I think, picked up at the Thrifty Wash. If you could look into those and get back to us, I would really, really appreciate finding out what was, what was the nexus behind that appearance?
So, the, do you know that they were operating in the morning of, in that area? I believe you talked to one of our on-duty supervisors, because he immediately called me afterwards. But I wouldn't be able to get you back to that information, because they don't make that information available to me.
Yeah, he was at the substation that morning, you're right. Thank you.
Yeah, so I wouldn't be able to do that, sir, sorry.
Thank you. I know I've got lots of other colleagues here. Thank you.
Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you, and thank you, Lieutenant Vasquez, for being here and answering questions. You've answered some of this already, but I did just want to echo that it is a question I've had repeatedly, and I want to be able to have a good, or an accurate response when I'm asked. This specific example of, you know, I'm being asked by residents, what should I do if I'm walking, walking to the park, walking around my neighborhood, if I'm waiting at a bus stop, and, you know, I might be alone? These are questions I'm getting from women in our community, saying, a car pulls up and, and is trying to put me in, in a car, and saying, you know, I'm ICE, I'm, you know, whatever they might say, what should I do? And it's because we've seen some reports, to my knowledge, not in California, but in a couple of other states where people are impersonating immigration officers, targeting women who might be alone. And at least in a couple of reported instances, they've then been sexually assaulted and left afterwards. So, the question I'm getting is, what should I do? Should I call 911 if I, if I, if someone is trying to take me and they're not identifying themselves? Because I think there is a perception that they shouldn't do that, or that if they call 911, no one's going to come, because there is this, this perception, the community, that the Sheriff's Department is not going to respond, or can't, or is not going to do something. So, it would be very helpful for me to be able to say to my community, if you, that happens to you, or if you are afraid of, of being taken or assaulted, call 911. So, is that what I'm hearing from you, that at the very least, a deputy would respond? And if it is someone, you know, impersonating or trying to commit a crime, that then you would intervene?
Correct, ma'am. I would say, our community should never be afraid to dial 911. There's any questions or concerns, anything, give us a call. We will do everything that we can to vet the information and provide some kind of a response. It really just, the hard part is, there's no clear-cut answer, because it's just, it depends, right? I would say, from a public safety standpoint, no one should be going out late alone. But that's a public safety standpoint unrelated to ICE. If women are worried to go outside, because they, they're afraid they're going to get abducted, assaulted, or whatever, from a stranger, they should have a plan, right? When we insert the ICE component in there, the only thing that really changes is, you need to call, and you need to call right away, right? You need to have some kind of plan. Aside of the ICE stuff, right? That's really what we're kind of, we're, we're mixing the, what if, if it's some kind of federal enforcement operation, as opposed to like an abduction from a stranger, right? Best practices are call. When in doubt, call. Don't go alone, have a plan, and do everything you can to be safe. I know there are a lot of groups that talk about this specific topic, that might be able to provide more information, but it's just, that's kind of a hard one to answer, of saying what I want to say, because I don't know if it really applies to ICE rule or not. So, call, please.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you. And to, to follow up a little bit on the line of questioning, does your office only receive notice if federal officers have a warrant and are taking action? Or if, if they're coming around and hanging out and don't have a warrant, would, would your office receive notice?
We get noticed whenever any outside agency comes into our area. So, that could be Santa Barbara PD, could be Lompoc PD, could be Marshals, could be Immigrations Customs and Enforcement. And that is just part of standardized practice to deconflict, to avoid those blow-on-blue situations like Councilmember Carrico explained earlier. So, we do get those notices. Now, it's not up to us to vet the purpose of their operation, so it could be a warrant, it could be surveillance, it could be covert, it could be overt. They're just calling to let us know that they're there.
Do you know if there's any evidence where, in the case of, with federal officers, where, you know, maybe that's not happening? Has your office experienced, in terms of not receiving that, that notice?
I like to think that we get notified a majority of the time, but it's, I think it's, it'd be hard to say it happens all the time, because sometimes mistakes happen, right?
Sure.
So, I think we're very fortunate, having the relationships that we have, that we are notified from outside agencies when they come in to our area to work. And I'm not aware of any areas that aren't being notified.
Okay. And, and does your office have instruction in terms of what to do if there is either National Guard or US military present in our community? Is there notice received then?
Under the context of a Immigration Customs Enforcement operation, or?
Yes.
I, I would say, National Guard passes through our area all the time. Highway 101 going from Southern California up to their training bases up north. We don't get called for that, that's just their, it's routine travel. If there's going to be any kind of operation, Guard and those units typically will be attached to a entity, those entities would be charged with notifying us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to make a comment that, I don't have a question, it's just, just to express how the fear is real that people have, and, and it must make your job even tougher, because you want them to trust you and report crimes, and know that you're there to help them, but yet, in a lot of ways, your hands are tied about what you can and can't do. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry that's happening to law enforcement, who we depend on for safety. So, it's just a comment, because I know how hard you guys do work, so it's, it's unfortunate that this is happening. Okay, so our, thank you.
Thank you.
And with questioning, our next speaker is Julissa Peña, from Executive Director of Immigrant Legal Defense Center.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, thank you so much for holding this special meeting and for considering further action to support our immigrant community in this moment of crisis. And just for those who don't know who we are, because we're still fairly small, the Immigrant Legal Defense Center's mission is to provide equal access to justice and due process to indigent immigrants facing deportation proceedings. We strive to make our mission possible by providing free legal representation to folks who cannot afford private immigration counsel. And so, that does include unaccompanied immigrant children also facing deportation proceedings. And the reason why our mission is so important is because we're truthfully trying to address a huge imbalance of power. And what a lot of folks don't know is that immigrants facing deportation proceedings, those that cannot afford private immigration attorneys, are forced to represent themselves. And so, we're really trying to address a huge imbalance of power, because they're not appointed counsel at the government's expense, but yet you have a well-prepared, you know, government attorney arguing for the individual's deportation, including that of children. And so, that's where we come in, to try and address that big gap in services. So, yes, again, my name is Julissa Peña, I am the Executive Director of the Immigrant Legal Defense Center, and we're also a member of the 805 Immigrant Coalition. And I'm speaking today out of deep concern for the safety and dignity of our immigrant neighbors here in Galena, Galita, and across the tri-county area. Right now, our community is under attack. We're seeing coordinated ICE enforcement raids and National Guard deployments targeting immigrants across California, and a growing network of detention facilitate, detention facilities, facilities that warehouse immigrants, many of them longstanding members of this community, including the City of Galita. This expansion of detention is not only tearing families apart, it is actively limiting people's access to legal representation. As more individuals are funneled into remote or out-of-state detention centers, they lose their ability to secure adequate legal counsel. This is deliberate. By denying immigrants due process and restricting their right to fair hearings, the system stacks the deck in favor of mass deportations. Meanwhile, ICE wields enormous discretionary power deciding who is detained and deported without meaningful oversight. This is not just about immigration status, this is about people's fundamental rights being stripped away. Given our proximity to the ICE Processing Center in Camarillo, and the focus this administration has placed on ramping up deportations in sanctuary states like ours, we are especially vulnerable. Now more than ever, local leaders need to rise up and lead with bold conviction. We urgently need to figure out tangible ways to support immigrant-serving organizations who are on the front lines, and to establish pathways for providing legal defense to community members caught in the grip of ICE enforcement. Fighting back in the courtroom is one of the most effective ways to protect our residents and keep families together. We're good at that. I urge this council to prioritize funding and partnerships that will bolster legal aid and immigration services. We are, we are at a breaking point. This is an emergency, and the situation will only worsen without immediate and coordinated action. So, I urge you, as local leaders, to come together and act now, so that frontline organizations like the Immigrant Legal Defense Center, like the 805 Undocu Fund, can continue to provide critical support to our immigrant communities. We need your leadership, and we need urgent financial commitment. I strongly encourage the City Council to spearhead initiatives similar to the LA Justice Fund, the Long Beach Justice Fund, which combines city, county, and foundation support to provide legal representation to immigrant families who can't afford counsel, and also rapid response systems in types of crisis. Now's the time to lead with courage and compassion. We cannot allow fear and unchecked federal enforcement to destroy the very fabric of this community. Please act swiftly to ensure that Galita stands as the community that truly safeguards all our neighbors and ensures they have access to justice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Questions from council? Councilmember Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Just, I was curious, let's say, does it matter, or is the process different for, let's say, if somebody's here under an asylum claim, as opposed to overstaying a visa or something, or Dream Act? What, I guess I'm curious what the process is under different situation, and when people are supposed to at least get due process, what, what the process should look like?
Yeah, so, it varies, but any of those three migrant populations that you mentioned right now, right now, can end up in deportation proceedings by having either initial contact with ICE enforcement at the border when they seek asylum, or let's say, a DACA recipient, just like what's happening on right now, they're racially profiled, they're arrested, they can end up in deportation proceedings. So, there's various ways that these populations, while they might have a pending immigration benefit in process, have never had contact with ICE enforcement, the moment they do, they are placed in deportation proceedings. But, but what we're seeing is that, what's even worse, that just being placed in deportation proceedings, which, you know, provides you with an opportunity to fight your case, is that folks are not even given the opportunity to get to that point. And so, what we've heard before is, what we're seeing is that a lot of folks are being forced into signing their own self-deportation. And the reason why is that, why it's happening, and that's being deliberate, we know it, is because they're making it difficult for us to provide them with legal representation. And this happened last week with the ICE raids. I had to drive all the way down to downtown LA, where there being several, everyone primarily that was arrested, was being housed at Basement 18, under a federal building on Spring Street. And so, we took a list of 80 folks that we knew had been taken, we gave it to the ICE enforcement agent, he said he was going to see who he can process. We were there from 7:00 AM to 12:00, because that's as long as they could allow us. Out of the 80 individuals, they only allowed us to see five. And so, we can see them hanging around, we can see them covering up their names, and so we know that this is deliberate.
Wow. And I guess I am particularly curious with asylum, because when people come over, they, the first thing they do is go to immigration services and say, here I am, and they're told, wait until we have an available judge, and then we can hear your case. So, they're doing everything legally and appropriately. Are they still being treated the same way, and as if they were, you know, doing something inappropriate?
Now, the challenges that we're having, the majority of our cases are asylum cases, and also unaccompanied immigrant children who are eligible, I won't get that technical, but for a protection that's called Special Immigrant Juvenile Status, and we have some detained cases as well. But what we're seeing with asylum cases, and something that we hadn't seen before, is that when an asylum, when an individual that has an asylum case opened, and... when an asylum, when an individual that has an asylum case opened and it's scheduled before the immigration court, they have court hearings, they're showing up, they're doing what they're supposed to do, right? What we're seeing is that government attorneys are coordinating with ICE to dismiss the removal charges against this asylum seeker so that jurisdiction then transfers over to ICE and they'll have the power to discretionary power to arrest them after dismissal, to expediteally remove them if they've been here less than two years. And so what we're doing is now fighting those dismissals, opposing those dismissals. And so we're getting challenged even more because a lot of these judges are still granting those dismissals, which, you know, if that's dismissed, if the removal charges are dismissed, then, you know, the person can essentially be expeditiously removed. And so what we've been forced to do, and we've only, I mean, we've been doing this for seven years and my, my, ever since, you know, this organization was founded and I started working with the ILDC in 2019, my focus has been for us to gain as much expertise just in immigration court. And so now we're being forced to expand our servants. We've actually expanded our services two weeks ago when we started seeing this tactic to provide representation before the highest administrative court under the Executive Office of Immigration Review, which is the Board of Immigration Appeals. So now we're appealing these dismissals because they're unjust, because people are being denied their chance to fight their case, to have a fair hearing. And so we're doing everything we can because we don't think that these actions can go unchallenged.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith? Oh, Carrie Akko, I'm sorry.
You can go.
Go ahead.
I defer to the lawyer.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer.
Thank you so much for being here. I've had the pleasure to see ILDC's attorneys and team at work and they're doing heroic work. If you could wave a magic wand, if resources were coming to your organization, and I guess what would be the immediate, you know, if you had more resources available, is it more that your attorneys need additional support staff so that they can, you know, focus on these complex cases? Is it that you need more attorneys? What do you see as sort of the, how would you use any resources that came your way?
Yeah, so we currently have five staff attorneys. We're a total of 12. We have five staff attorneys, three support staff, three paralegals, and we also, two years ago, integrated social services into our program, only to provide mental health support to our clients specifically. Where, I mean, five staff attorneys were handling a caseload of almost 500 clients facing deportation proceedings. And, you know, that's been possible with the help, of course, of support staff, but I think we're so behind. I mean, I grew up in the San Fernando Valley and there's organizations everywhere in L.A. providing deportation defense. In Santa Barbara County, it's just ILDC. And there are nearly 3,000 people just in Santa Barbara County facing deportation proceedings. This is such an affluent region, we're so behind. I think we still need to work hard in building capacity and having trained removal defense attorneys. I think where the biggest need is, because we need, Representation Immigration Court is still funding for immigration attorneys, and it's where we're challenged the most. I've had this program for mental health services that I integrated two years ago, and I've been able to grow it and less, double it in less than a year than in comparison what it took me over three years to grow the legal program. And it's just because folks see this as, yeah, a controversial issue to provide legal services to undocumented folks when it is part of our constitution to provide them with the due process rights regardless of citizenship status.
Thank you. That's helpful to hear. And just to note, there's actually a recent report from the State Bar of California that I'd recommend that everybody look at. It's called the Justice Gap Report. And it's from, they had initially done a study in 2019 and then they updated it in 2024. And that report has specific information about not only just our needs in the civil justice system as a whole, but particular needs for immigration services. So just in terms of additional information that's out there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carrie Akko.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I see some folks in the audience that were here last time and spoke to us. And one of the things that we were, we were asked to consider by a number of folks was to join the ACLU lawsuit with the, with the folks in Los Angeles. I've also heard concern expressed that if communities can't make a clear nexus between what's happening in their community and what's going on and being litigated by the ACLU, that it could actually harm the case. I don't know if that's true or not. I'm not a lawyer. But what I am curious about is are there other steps that we could do that would be supportive of that effort, that would be less risky? For example, an amicus brief. Are there, you know, in your opinion, would that be a prudent step for the city of Galita to file an amicus brief in support of that lawsuit?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Do you share concern that's out there about joining, actually joining the suit? Or do you not share that concern?
No, because we're already a target.
Okay.
I don't think things can get any worse. You know, we've been very vocal about our sanctuary laws, right, where we stand, even cities and counties. I think that's not going to change anything. We are also located, geographically located in one of the most vulnerable counties where we have two ICE processing centers at every point. We have one in North Santa Maria ICE Processing Center and we have Camarillo. And so feel like we're just so surrounded, we're so geographically vulnerable to ICE enforcement. And then another thing that makes us even more vulnerable for folks that are still fighting their immigration case is that transportation, folks are here, but they have to fight their case in L.A. immigration court. So matters can't get any worse.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
I have a question. You mentioned social services. So what's happening, what are we doing? What are you doing? What's this city doing in social services for the children that have lost their families? I mean, that just breaks my heart to even be able to talk about that. So what's happening with those children? Are they being deported as well? Are you taking them in or are they looking for relatives? Do you know what's happening with those kids?
Various things are happening with those children. Some of those children are, who are U.S. citizens, are being forced to also deport themselves to unite with their family member who was the head of household who was deported. Others are, you know, staying with family members, friends, while they still figure out if the separation is going to be permanent or not. Some parents are making the decision to leave their children behind because it is so unsafe for them to bring them with them, you know? Various factors and those that are not. And then another thing that a lot of folks don't know, but there are a lot of children that during this time entered as unaccompanied immigrant children, they do have family members here and are under federal custody and shelters under the Office of Refugee Resettlement. And so what we're also seeing on that end is a lot of those kids, even though they have family here that could claim them, are not because they're undocumented and they're afraid that they're going to be targeted. And so they're ending up on child welfare services.
That's, wow. Councilmember Mayor Perotam Kasdan.
Yeah, just one other question on DACA. With DACA, the, it's the Dream Act, children and families registered, right? They formally, you know, had to annually or a certain amount of time register. Are they now being, is that information where they trusted the government to, you know, according to this law, being used to target them?
So we only have one DACA case, and that wasn't the reason why. We haven't seen that yet. I won't suspect that's going to be a way that they'll start targeting folks to meet, you know, their ridiculous quota. But anyone that during their legal process, if they have the opportunity to apply for a work permit, they're automatically registered, even if they themselves don't register, they're automatically a part of the system. So a lot of folks that are, have a pending case may already be registered without even knowing.
Okay. I mean, you know, when people register, participate in a government program, there's the assumption when it's formal in that sense that they can, the information they provide isn't going to be used against them. I know you agree.
Yeah.
And it's just, you know, that we could be so dishonest. It's just, anyway.
Okay. Not seeing any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is John Shetler, or maybe I've got your last name wrong, Assistant Superintendent of Public Services, Galita Union School District.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and members of the City Council. My name is John Shetler and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of People's Services for Galita Union School District. Tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of the school district. I want to express my appreciation to the city of Galita and our community partners for their support during this time of uncertainty for many of our families. Ms. Peña, you are a tough act to follow. Next time, schedule me after Frank, please. In light of recent immigration enforcement activity in our region, Galita Union School District reaffirms our unwavering commitment to ensuring that our schools remain safe, welcoming spaces for all students and families. Every child deserves to learn in an environment free from fear and disruption. We stand with our community and remain dedicated to protecting the dignity and well-being of every student regardless of immigration status. Like the DA, we don't require any evidence of citizenship to enroll in schools. The only requirement is that you live in Galita. And I welcome any questions from the council.
Do you allow, I'm wondering if ICE were to show up on a particular campus, do you have, or looking for their parents possibly, what's the policy, the school's policy about? Is the school a safe place for them to be and the parents as well?
Yeah, we do have procedures in place and all of our local schools have since probably December, January, that guide our school leaders and how to respond if enforcement, ICE enforcement were to show up at a school. One of the things that we have received legal guidance on is what documentation we require before going any further, and my office would be verifying any of that information. We're also sensitive to just the impact of enforcement in our area across from a school in a parking lot, and so we train for those circumstances as well.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I'm wondering if the school district has done any partnerships with local nonprofits or others in terms of linking, linking families to resources? But I'm specifically thinking about sort of what's called family preparedness efforts where families sort of come up with a plan for what a family should do if a parent were to disappear one day.
Yeah, we have family liaison positions now that work in schools that provide support to families for any number of things that have to do with removing barriers that get in the way of their kids coming to school, including helping them plan for different contingencies. In my previous role in Santa Barbara Unified, we started pivoting and some of those trainings that you're referring to, we were holding via Zoom. So we're just responsive to when our families are saying we're not comfortable showing up for those kinds of things, we would continue.
Right. I certainly understand that, that fear. And I wear, I wear a few different hats. So I can certainly offer, I know the nonprofit I work for works in various areas of law, but if, if we can be a resource to Galita Union for that, for that purpose, you know, we want to make sure that families can get, safely get that information. And I know various groups are doing that work.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you. Not a question, but just thank you for being here and congratulations on your new role. The school district is really fortunate to have you, your leadership there. It was my greatest privilege to get to serve as a school board member in the Galita Union School District, and I have no doubt that you're all, sorry, because I'm also a parent in the school district. I have no doubt that the school district will do everything it can to protect its students. I know the teachers will do everything they can to protect its students, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carrie Akko.
So now I have to ask the awkward question. So one of the, it's been a dark few weeks, but one of the darkest moments for me happened in a boardroom for a public meeting. I'm the chair of the Board of Communicify, which is our local head start provider and provides a lot of other services. And one of our board members is the head of SNCOW. I think you might know where I'm going with this question now. So one of the things that you said earlier was one of your fail safes or processes is to make sure you verify the information that they're providing when they're making their inquiries. Well, given that Medicaid now has to participate and turn over data to ICE, and presumably you have students in the school district who are the children of families that are accessing Medicaid and DSS, social services, are you folks working on a plan for how to kind of provide additional fail safes and additional layers of protection? I'm not asking you to share what they are, but I just, I hope that's something that is being kind of operationalized as we speak because I'm very afraid for the children of the school district right now.
Yeah, I would say we're aware of that concern as well. We do have some firewalls in place that protect the kind of student information that we share outside of our system, but we're also working with our local attorneys to make sure that we're protecting families' information at any turn.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Councilmember Smith, did you have another question? Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Last speaker that I have listed is Blanca Figueroa, Office of Representative Salud Carvajal.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Galita City Council. I'm Blanca Figueroa. I am here on behalf of Congressman Salud Carvajal, who is unable to provide a statement in person. Again, I'm Blanca Figueroa and I serve as a senior district representative and immigration liaison with the Office of Congressman Salud Carvajal here in Santa Barbara County. On July 10th of this year, ICE conducted a raid on Casiras Pass Road in Carpinteria. Congressman Carvajal and his team were on site and witnessed an excessive show of force against local farm workers and community members who had gathered out of concern over the militarized operation happening in their usual quiet neighborhood. After hearing about the raid directed from concerned constituents and through live updates on social media, Congressman Carvajal went to the scene to see for himself what was happening. When he arrived, he was blocked by heavily armed Homeland Security Police officers and was not allowed to pass the barricade despite identifying himself as a member of Congress, attempting to get answers on behalf of his constituents. Peaceful protesters who gathered at the site were fired up with flash grenades, injuring Carpinteria City Councilmember Monica Solorsano, along with other community members, including a child. Later, smoke enters and other projectors were fired at the crowd, causing further injuries. Representative Carvajal strongly comments these aggressive actions. This is not the America we know and believe in. And we will keep pushing the Department of Homeland Security for accountability and answers. We have learned via a press release from ICE that the coordination We have learned via a press release from ICE that the coordinator raid between Carpinteria and Camarillo in Ventura County resulted in the arrest of over 300 individuals, 10 specifically in Carpinteria. Some of the individuals have already been deported, while others remain in ICE detention. Reports from the larger Camarillo raid site include the death of one of the farm workers. The kind of chaos that was on display two weeks ago only serves the further traumatized families and tear communities apart. These militarized ICE raids and detentions are not how you keep communities safe. They are gross. The limited public resources and fundamental betrayed of the values that defend us as Americans. Sadly to say, with the passage of H.R. 1 into law, an unusual $170 billions is on the way to the Department of Homeland Security to dramatically scale immigration enforcement. What Congressman witnessed on July 10 in our own backyard is an introduction to what is to come across the nation. It is imperative on local leaders and community members convene meetings like this to discuss measures to protect the most sensitive in our community. According to recent communications from the ICE Congressional Unit, all ICE detention facilities are currently allowing visits from family members, attorneys, and councilor representatives. Additionally, our office can assist the public in submitting requests if anyone needs help locating a family member who is in ICE custody and reside within our district. Please contact our office for further details. The Congressman is grateful for your leadership and looks forward to continue in partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you all for being here. Okay. Ready for a public comment? Okay, now it's your turn to have a speak. And again, no clapping or booing. And I will say, there's a lot of speakers, but if anybody has something they'd like to say, and they can say it in one minute, I would ask you to come to the front of the line, and, but you will only have one minute, and you'll be cut off after that. But you're certainly welcome to use your three minutes if you need to speak longer. So, if there's anybody that would like to speak for one minute, you can, may come up to the podium now and state your name so we can pull your slip and... Okay, one minute? Yes. Okay. Blake. One minute.
No, no, no. One minute is if you want to get to the front of the line.
One minute. Hi. State your name. I think we know who you are, but...
Marian Shapiro. I just want to express an opinion. I have no answers. I don't know how to proceed. I'm just grateful to have this caring city council where everyone who, of whom is listening and wants to protect Galita residents. My opinion is that sending unidentified masked officers with military weapons kidnapping citizens as well as non-citizens is not only cruel, but is against our Constitution, so carefully, so carefully designed by our founders to create a fair country where no one is above the law. My long-departed parents would not have lost so many aunts, uncles, and cousins if the people in their homeland of Germany had risen up and insisted that we will not allow a dictator to kill people he hates. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Kiara Kofed. Hi, Mayor and Council, and thank you to all the officials who are here speaking with us today. I just wanted to voice some of my concerns on the question of how we protect our community members and women from being abducted off the streets by individuals claiming to be ICE. Lieutenant Vasquez said that if a woman's worried about being abducted, that she should not be alone, or that she should have a plan, but I think that's the job of the Sheriff's Department, so I would like to have a little bit more explanation on that front. Also, our DA explained that he's not sent information regarding whether specific officers have warrants or not. I think that is extremely concerning. I think that there has to be something in place to determine whether these officers are acting on legal order, or whether they're just people terrorizing immigrants in our streets. Ten days ago, Judge Frimpong of U.S. District Court said that ICE operations are in violation of the Fourth Amendment. I think constitutional rights like probable cause, due process, and equal treatment under the law apply to all people regardless of resident status, and I hope you all will stand with us on that.
Thank you so much.
And Mayor, just a note, so it's clear for our public, that the folks that are coming up for one minute, everyone's entitled to the same three minutes, but this is just requesting that the folks for one minute go first.
Was I not clear?
Just a noting, in case there was any confusion.
Yeah. This is the one minute. Yeah.
I can talk fast. My name is Sarah Penna. Thank you all so much for everything and for you all being here. I'm a resident of Galita, a mother of two, and a volunteer leader with Moms Demand Action. I'm here tonight because I believe in safety in our community means more than just freedom from gun violence, which is normally what I'm up here advocating for, but it also means freedom from fear. That includes the fear families experience when ICE operates in our neighborhoods, often without transparency and accountability, as we've been talking about a lot tonight. We cannot call ourselves a safe city while our immigrant neighbors are being targeted, surveilled, and separated from their families. I'm a mom. I worry about my kids, but I cannot imagine the fear immigrant parents live with every day, wondering if ICE is going to show up in their neighborhood, at their work, or, you know, outside of their children's school. Okay, I'll go quick. We must be a sanctuary city in action, not just in sentiment. Our immigrant families deserve to feel safe. They deserve to feel seen and supported and be able to call when they are in need.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Please state your name.
Good evening. My name's Lindsay Vining. I live in Galita. I have two kids at Brandon. I'm on the PTA. I'm a math teacher at San Marcos High School, and I went to UCSB, and my husband works there. I'm going to finish Sarah's letter. Tonight, I'm asking the council to act boldly and humanely, joining us in demanding that one, the city resources be used to actively verify the presence of ICE in Galita; two, that the city alert the public whenever ICE is operating in our community; three, that city agencies serve as a barrier to unconstitutional abductions, not a pipeline to them; four, that you prohibit any collaboration between local law enforcement and ICE; five, and finally, that local law enforcement stop, oh, stop pulling over vehicles simply for lacking license plates, but practice it can become a pretext for racial profiling immigration enforcement. Galita must be a sanctuary in action, not just in sentiment. Our immigrant families deserve to feel safe, seen, and supported, and as a mom, a neighbor, I'm also these things, and someone committed to justice, we will both keep showing up for our reality. Thank you, but I do think that you guys can do a little bit more.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Jose. I am a project coordinator with the Mestecua Nicanan Community Organizing Project, and today I'm here as a representative also of the 805 Immigrant Coalition. Tonight, I speak on behalf of the indigenous migrant community members who are currently on their way home after picking the fruits and vegetables that end up on our dinner tables. Despite the heavy fear of anxiety they feel, this evening I speak on behalf of the three boys who were left without their mother on July 10 in Carpinteria. This evening, I am speaking on behalf of all who have experienced extreme hardship as a result of their family being targeted by ICE. Youth across the Central Coast have been and continue to be distressed that their parents may not return from work. Parents and elders out of financial necessity continue to go to work on a daily basis with a heavy feeling of fear and anxiety that they may not be able to return to their families like those from July 10. Even mixed-status households and those in the process of doing it the right way are reluctant to step out of their homes for their appointments because of the demonstrated patterns of tactics executed by ICE. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fernando Martinez. Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. I'm here on behalf of MYCOB and the 805 Immigrant Coalition. In the recent months, ICE raids in Ventura County and Carpinteria have devastated immigrant community. I want to share the story of Victor, a farm worker, husband, father, who was simply driving to the store with his family when masked agents stopped him and detained him. He had no criminal history. His children cried out, "My dad didn't do anything." And they were right. This cannot continue. Immigrant farm workers are essential. They put food on our tables and strengthen our economy. We cannot be silent as, as our immigrant community are torn apart. I urge you to adopt the Resolution 25 in support of immigrant protection, and also please include appropriation of 375,000 for legal defense and rapid response and mutual aid, and join the ACLU lawsuit challenging ICE raid in our region. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here as a member of MYCOB. And I'm also a member of the 805 Coalition, Immigrant Coalition. I never thought it would be a crime to work with dignity. I never thought that making this country, this county, this city a great place would be a crime. And that is what they're making of this community. They're criminalizing us. When we haven't done anything. Sheriffs are collaborating, collaborating with ICE. We've proved that. So, let them not come with lies. Given these attacks on our immigrant community. We urge the city of Galita to adopt. To call on the federal electives to the federal representatives. And to advocate for the residents and members of this community that live in Galita. And to dedicate at least $375,000 to nonprofit organizations for the legal defense of immigrants, rapid response, and mutual support. We're not criminals. We're the people that make this country, this city, this place great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Savala Pisano. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little emotional. Thank you, City Council, for your questions and hearing our community and asking those uncomfortable questions. James, I appreciate you asking those uncomfortable questions because we need to be heard. Those questions need to be heard. Right now, I don't feel safe. I'm afraid for my family and friends. I'm afraid to have my father take my child to the park. If I feel afraid, I can only imagine how my, my community feels. What can you do? And this is for you, Sheriff. I want to know what is the game plan to protect our community? What can you do to help us out? It's just, you know, it makes me very upset that all this is going on right now in our community, and I really would love for your support to help make this a better place and not have people live in fear.
Thank you.
Because we all live in fear right now.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Kit Bonson, and I'm a resident of Galita. I'm here with other members of the Steering Committee of Indivisible Santa Barbara, and we are proud members of the 805 Undocu Fund Coalition, providing rapid response, mutual aid, and policy advocacy to protect our communities. On behalf of Indivisible and as members of the 805 Coalition, we demand that the City Council address a threat posed by ICE to our public safety by immediately taking the following actions. One, acknowledge that your primary responsibility is to our public safety, and this includes protection of our communities against the lawless actions of ICE. Two, declare a state of emergency, enabling you to cut through red tape and act without delay. Appropriate at least $375,000 to nonprofit groups for immigrant legal defense. Join other central and Southern California cities in the lawsuit brought by the ACLU aimed at halting ICE raids in our region, and direct Galita police to protect public safety by handing out red Know Your Rights cards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kelsey, and I've lived in Santa Barbara County for the last 20 years. We are a nation of immigrants. Immigrants from all over the world make our community better and more vibrant. It's the so-called federal agents that are the ones breaking the law and terrorizing our neighborhoods. We don't even know who they are or where they're taking our community members oftentimes. And it's not just immigrants that they're taking. They're taking American citizens. They have arrested judges. They have taken members of staff from congresspeople in DC. No one is safe. I'm scared that I could be next, just for speaking out. And we just heard from our local Sheriff's Department that they are aware when ICE activity is going to happen. I asked the city also be alerted and monitor the activities of these so-called federal agents. I saw today in Huntington Beach that police stopped an ICE impersonator who had a truck full of guns before they were able to do any harm, but that could happen here. Yeah. At the very least, we could ensure proper identification and warrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the one-minute speakers? I think that might be. Okay, so we're moving on to three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking first, I have Dustin Hoyseth, followed by Gunner Langenhuesen.
Sorry, I was running in from outside. Hello, Mayor Perotti and council members. My name is Dustin Hoyseth. I'm Director of Public Policy at the Santa Barbara South Coast Chamber of Commerce, representing businesses from Galita to Carpinteria. I'm here today to discuss how recent immigration enforcement activities in the region have impacted our local economy. These recent activities have generated significant concern among businesses, their employees, and our fellow community members. Members of the local workforce, regardless of their immigration status, are worried for their safety, as well as the safety of their friends and family. This has been extremely disruptive to our local economy. Businesses depend upon a consistently available workforce, predictable operating conditions, as well as the general well-being of their employees and the communities they serve. Clear communication between federal agencies and local officials can help minimize confusion and ensure enforcement activities don't interfere with essential community services and business operations. Equally important, all members of our community, employees, customers, neighbors, should all be able to go about their daily lives with a basic expectation of dignity and due process. Whatever one's views on immigration policy, most of us share common goals of safe neighborhoods, thriving local businesses, and a community where families can plan for their future. Our members have shared their thoughts and concerns about recent immigration issues and their effects on businesses, the workforce, and the broader community. The Chamber remains dedicated to our role of listening to the community and our members convening critical conversations, researching actionable, actionable solutions, and providing support however we can. Part of the Chamber's current efforts is to provide resources and information that help local businesses and their employees remain informed and prepared. To view these resources, I encourage you to visit sbscchamber.com, where you can find more information. These immigration resources offer practical guidance for California employers on how to ensure they are complying with federal laws and responding appropriately to potential ICE audits or workplace visits, all while protecting their employees' rights and safeties. Things like knowing what is considered a public and a private space in your business and what that allows ICE to do, and the difference between a judicial and an administrative warrant and what rights those grant. Again, to view these resources, visit sbscchamber.com. I should say, I'm not a lawyer, and the Chamber isn't offering legal advice, but understanding your rights is... but understanding your rights as an employer is essential to safeguarding your business and supporting a confident and safe workforce. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking next, I have Gunner Langenhuesen, followed by Ian Bauke, followed by Ashley Farrell.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and members of the Council. My name is Gunner Langenhuesen, and I’m here to deliver a statement on behalf of Assemblymember Greg Hart. I want to express my deep outrage and heartbreak over the recent ICE raids on agricultural operations in Carpinteria and across the Central Coast. These actions were unnecessary, harmful, and fundamentally inconsistent with the values we share as a community. The workers targeted in these raids are not strangers. They are our neighbors, they are parents, community members, and essential workers who deserve dignity and respect, not fear, intimidation, or detention. The manner in which these raids were conducted, without advance notice, transparency, or coordination with local officials, inflicted lasting trauma on families and communities. Children are left in limbo, businesses are disrupted, trust in law enforcement and government institutions is shaken. The fear unleashed by these actions is not limited to those directly targeted. Immigrants across our region, whether they are undocumented, naturalized, or legal residents, are now living with the constant terror that they or their loved ones could be stopped, interrogated, or detained by masked agents demanding papers. This is not the United States we believe in. No one should have to live in fear simply because of where they were born or how they look. I have reached out to federal authorities to demand answers and accountability, and I will continue working with state and local leaders to ensure that these unjust and damaging tactics are never repeated in our region again. I am deeply grateful to the nonprofits and community organizations across the Central Coast, such as the 805 Immigrant Coalition, for their unwavering support of families affected throughout the region. This community has always stood for inclusion, decency, and compassion. These raids do not reflect who we are, and we must make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Ian Bauke, followed by Ashley Farrell, followed by Alicia Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti, members of the City Council and Goleta community. Thank you to the city for organizing this meeting and allowing the community the opportunity to make their voices heard in this difficult moment. My name is Ian Bauke. I’m here to deliver the following statement on behalf of State Senator Manique Lamont. In the past few weeks, we have witnessed our communities terrorized by chaotic ICE raids, including one that claimed the life of a community member who had been working in California for decades, picking the very food we put on our families’ tables. Enough is enough. These raids and their disproportionate display of force have made our communities less safe. I stand in solidarity with our leaders across the Central Coast and our California congressional delegation as they demand transparency and accountability. At the state level, we have passed policies that protect our immigrant communities, including the California Values Act, known as SB 54, which I was proud to vote for in 2017. This law limits state and local government resources from being used to assist with deportations. This year, we’ve passed state legislation to create a $50 million litigation fund to prepare for moments like this. With that funding, our California Attorney General Rob Bonta has so far filed 31 lawsuits and injunctions to put a stop to this federal overreach. The legislature has also put forth critical legislation to protect our immigrant communities and their families at local schools, childcare centers, and health facilities. Additionally, I’m grateful that our state senate passed a budget that provides $160 million for immigration legal services, funding to ensure our state is working to protect the due process rights of all residents. Thank you to the city of Goleta, to our nonprofit organizations, and to the community for standing together with your neighbors and continuing to exercise your constitutional rights. I stand with Goleta, with our immigrant communities, and with everyone who calls this country home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Ashley Farrell, followed by Alicia Edwards, followed by Tanya Mayer.
Hello, thank you. James, really great questions. They resonated with me. I appreciate you. I’m here to say that, for me, enough is enough. We are witnessing the inhumane and violent targeting of people who are not only vulnerable, but also essential to our society, businesses, and economy. Their only crime is having brown skin and not having the right pieces of paper. They are the very people who keep our local and national economies running, and yet they are being stripped of their dignity, their humanity, and their rights. Their labor supports our supply chains, their taxes fund our schools, their children are our future. They are a large reason that California is the fourth-largest economy on the planet, and we feed the nation. We are now called upon to support them. A masked illegitimate police force authorized and funded by a convicted felon is sweeping them off the streets right before our eyes, with no due process, without access to legal counsel, holding them for days, weeks, and even months without basic necessities. The ripple effect of this trauma will be visited upon all of us, and our children, and your children. This is not just a violation of rights, it’s a violation of our core values. I ask you, our elected leaders, what will you do to protect our community before it’s too late? Leadership means protecting the people who make our communities thrive. It means standing up not only for what’s right, but also for what will keep our community strong. So I ask you, where is your red line? What will you, as a governing body, do to defend the people who are an integral part of the vital fabric of our community and our economy? What actions are you willing to take? What are you willing to stand beside? We are willing to stand beside you and support you in standing up against our federal government in doing what’s right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Alicia Edwards, followed by Tanya Mayer, followed by Kira Gary.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. Firstly, I need you to know that public speaking and attention are not my forte, and actually, my worst nightmare. But I need to speak today because this is more important and bigger than me. I’m here to speak up for my community and myself. For my community, these people are human beings first. They are friends, neighbors, colleagues, and family. It is hard to see their safety and dignity stripped away when they are essential and contributing members to our society. They make this country better. This has nothing to do with criminals, but instead terrorizing and traumatizing brown and black communities through systemic racism. This is a campaign of violence and intimidation. I have volunteered my time with local organizations to help and support people who have been victimized by these agents and who have had their families torn apart, because it’s the least I can do. And it’s still not enough, because I cannot stop it. Now for myself. It is hard enough trying to make a living in this county and dealing with the stresses of everyday worries. I now have to be afraid to go to the grocery store and look over my shoulder while in public for a masked person to snatch me off the streets for the way that I look. I’m here today to ask you to allot funds for local immigration resources for attorneys and rapid response networks to join the ACLU and LA County lawsuit and support Senate Bill 627 to prohibit law enforcement from masking their face and showing identification. They say history repeats itself, and as we are seeing now, I am asking you to learn from past actions and to apply these lessons to make better decisions today. I ask that you stand with your constituents and community to keep all of us safe, because it is the right thing to do. So please, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Tanya Mayer, followed by Kira Gary, followed by Jonathan Martin.
Hi, I’m Tanya Mark. Say his name, Jaime Alanis. Y'all, this is next level. When violence against the people is this systemic, it’s difficult putting together a timed speech, especially when I get thrown off balance by law enforcement telling me that I shouldn’t go out alone at night, because then I’m at fault for anything bad that might happen to me. So to address that mentality, I had a high school student tell me about a man who was following her around. It shouldn’t matter, but in broad daylight, taking out his penis and taunting her over many days. She reported it to the police department, and two male officers interrogated her about the multiple incidents. One of the officers started off by saying, “I know we’re not supposed to ask this, but what were you wearing?” Clearly, the dichotomy between what local law enforcement states in all of these meetings and their statements and actions during and after both regular crimes and ICE raids is pushing community members to turn away from law enforcement and to each other instead. What happened to protect and serve? The people are putting their bodies between ICE violence and our community. Why can’t you? I’m happy to hear that the purpose of this meeting includes six action items, because let me tell you, community members are showing up and showing out at these meetings and are ready to not only be listened to, but genuinely heard, valued, and protected. The people in the 805 and all over California are putting in the work protecting our communities. We are uniting with the help of organizations like 805 Undocu Fund, VC Defensa, and La Casa de la Raza. We are monitoring the streets, following and documenting ICE vehicles to keep them from kidnapping and terrorizing our fellow community members. We are donating food and supplies. We are delivering groceries and basic necessities. We are giving rides so that people, our fellow community members, can get to school and work safely. We are checking in with summer camps so we can prevent any further kidnappings of entire families. To be clear, that is not ICE conducting investigations. That is ICE terrorizing people and tearing the community apart to fulfill a quota. Quotas, by the way, serve to dehumanize people and turn them into numbers. The people of this community are helping each other navigate this constitutional crisis. It is long past time that elected officials follow the example the people are setting and take action. Si se puede. Declare a state of emergency. Support organizations like 805 Immigrant Coalition and 805 Undocu Fund. Join the ACLU lawsuit. Allocate city resources to actively verify ICE presence. Alert community members of ICE presence in Goleta and act as a barrier to unconstitutional abductions. Prohibit local law enforcement from collaborating with ICE and instruct local law enforcement to pull over vehicles that do not have license plates. The federal government wants us to cower in fear, wants you to bow down to them. But the people are strong. You are strong, and you can stand up to their illegal actions. Chingada migra, ICE out of Goleta, ICE out of 805, and ICE out of California.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Kira Gary, followed by Jonathan Martin, followed by Sasha Alvarez. Speaking next, I have Jonathan Martin, followed by Sasha Alvarez, followed by Zach Ortiz.
Good afternoon. Sorry, always gets us in trouble. Mayor, Madam Chair, Perotti, and Honorable City Council, thank you for giving me time to speak today. I was at Board of Supervisors last Tuesday. We sat there for eight hours to hear our public defenders, our district attorneys, and our own sheriff say, “There’s nothing really we can do against the federal government.” And I don’t mean to mince words, but they are coming for us. And we need to not only make policies for our government institutions, but also local restaurants, recreation centers, schools, churches, hospitals, healthcare centers, to require warrants when coming in. Also, we need to have... Hard to say, but we need to put bodies in front of doors. If you are a U.S. citizen, don’t be afraid to exercise your constitutional rights. That’s what we have them here for. If you’re an immigrant, don’t be afraid to exercise your constitutional rights. They were afforded to us by our founding fathers. I propose a municipal ID system that already is implemented within San Francisco and Los Angeles and New Haven, Connecticut, where they are providing IDs with the city logo to undocumented migrants that don’t have the proper paperwork, so they can still, with dignity, participate in local services, such as healthcare, or school, or even religious services. This does cost a lot, but I believe it’s already been prepaid, as if you look at the talks, contributions by undocumented migrants, paid nearly $97 billion in taxes in 2022, including federal and state and local taxes. In many cases, their effective tax rate exceeded that of the wealthiest Americans. They pay into programs like Social Security and Medicare, programs they often can’t even access. These workers help sustain industries like agriculture, construction, food service, and caregiving. Removing them from the workforce would shrink the economy and reduce revenues by estimates of hundreds of billions of dollars. Legalization is a win-win. Providing legal work status would likely increase tax revenues by $40 billion and allow families to live without fear. It’s not about fairness, it’s about smart economic policy. So I believe that the cost of making this municipal ID system has already been prepaid years, decades ago. One of my new favorite heroes is John... Sorry, John Lewis in Carry On. He talks of making good trouble. Good trouble is his way of saying that he was arrested over 60 times, fighting for our freedoms that we’re fighting still for today. Don’t be afraid to get into good trouble. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Sasha Alvarez, followed by Zach Ortiz, followed by McKinley McPherson.
Good evening, Mayor and Chair members. My name is Sasha Alvarez, the proud daughter of immigrant parents, a recent UCSB graduate, and to the best of my ability, an advocate for farm workers and immigrants alike. I’m here today because I’m angry, saddened, I’m concerned, not just as a community member, but as someone who has worked alongside these families being targeted by us and continues to do so. These recent raids at Glass House Farms are not isolated events. They are state-sanctioned violence. This was the tip of the iceberg for a lot of us, and it got a lot of us mobilized. It shouldn’t have ever gotten to this point, but here we are. These calculated acts of violence are mere performances used to sow fear across our region. But what they forget is that this is fear that is very well-known to us. It has been used against us for years and years. This increased ICE presence and detention in our region is not about keeping us safe, and anybody who says so is a liar. It is about destabilization, the destabilization of our economies, of our communities, and our safety. It isn’t about taking criminals off the streets. It’s about separating families, about pushing people into silence and the shadows. But our community has never depended on comfort or privilege to survive. Although they are trying to starve us of freedom, we have always survived off breadcrumbs, always asking for more. And from those crumbs, we have raised generations of activists, scholars, doctors, and other important community members. We’ve created whole communities, created whole economies, and have fed this country. Now, as we see across Santa Barbara County, our people are not retreating. We are organizing, we are resisting, and showing up for one another. We are growing day by day. What our government and their puppets forget to remember is that the spirit of resistance cannot be deported, even if our family members can. I just want to call out our DA real quick, something I didn’t write down, but... He mentioned Martin Luther King and the Acts of Peaceful Protest. Martin Luther King, if I may remind you, was murdered for his Acts of Peaceful Protest. Our rights were never won through peace. They were always run through violence, unfortunately. We have always had to shed blood, and it’s usually brown and black bodies that are on those front lines. But just a reminder to you for quoting Dr. King. We also were mentioning SB 54, which prohibits local law enforcement from helping ICE. But when the sheriff’s department gets word that ICE is coming in and they’re not notifying us, that puts us in extreme danger. You are not protecting anybody. You’re only protecting yourself and Trump and his administration. To the City Council, we ask you to do your part. Stand with the community, which you guys have already done so, but like someone mentioned, there’s always more to do. Allocate the city resources, I’m asking, to allocate city resources to actively verify ICE presence, to alert community members of ICE presence in Goleta, to act as a barrier to unconstitutional abductions, to prohibit local law enforcement from the collaboration with ICE, and to instruct local law enforcement to pull over vehicles that do not have license plates. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Zach Ortiz, followed by McKinley McPherson, followed by Lindsey Romero.
Hello, my name is Zach Ortiz. I’m a representative and member of the National Brown Berets and representing the Brown Berets as a whole. Today, I’m going to start with some requests. I request that the city provide resources directly to local organizations and activists to provide resources to our immigrant communities, to defend ourselves against ICE. I also ask that you demand that local law enforcement provide updates about federal immigration operations happening in our communities and send that information directly to the community so that we can prepare to defend ourselves. I’m a member of the National Brown Berets, so I know very well that there is no division between local law enforcement and federal law enforcement. The Brown Berets were infiltrated by the FBI and local law enforcement to diminish the works that we do to fight for ethnic studies in our schools, to provide for... to provide for fair and just law enforcement in our communities. We have been killed by local law enforcement. We continue to be killed by local law enforcement. We've been deported and killed by federal agents. There is no, there is no difference. And so what I ask you is to be suspicious, to ask questions, be cautious about the law enforcements that carry the monopolization of violence in our communities. Because us coming together here peacefully, asking for things, asking for you to defend us, this is just, this is just all that we can do under the current legal system. But when law enforcement or the National Guard come for you, come for us because you are activists against Trump's regime or you question the authority of the federal government, they'll be ordered to arrest you, potentially execute you as they did in Nazi Germany. This is not the first time that fascism has come for the people. Capitalism in decline is fascism, and that's what we're experiencing. And just like they did in Nazi Germany, they will come for the local activists. They will come for union leaders, as they have already. They will come for the local activists, the immigrants, the others, and they will round you up. And they will round up the politicians that stood in defense of us. So our actions will be judged today in history about what we are willing to do. Are we willing to break the law if needed for a good reason? Because your local law enforcement breaks the law all the time when they kill unarmed civilians, but what we just pay a settlement. Can you be courageous and bold and break the law in defense of the people? Can you ask the right questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have McKinley McPherson, followed by Lindsey Romero, followed by Brian Merz.
Good evening, my name is McKinley McPherson. This is Chris Schmider. We are both undergraduates at the University of California, Santa Barbara, and dedicated members of American Indian and Indigenous Student Association. I wanted to bring up a few things. First, some demands that we have from our community is to allocate city resources to actively verify ICE presence, allocate city resources to alert community members of ICE's presence in Galita and Isla Vista as well, and to also work as a barrier with the resources you have to unconstitutional deportations and snatching people off of the streets, and also to make sure that our unmarked vehicles that are parading our communities are pulled over and properly identified, as many people have mentioned today. I am a big activist and work with the UC system to represent the student body all the way up to Capitol Hill. And while you all work six minutes from our university, I hope you all know that our students are deeply afraid. And unfortunately, as the city and the nation has, and state of California, has constantly worked to destroy Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities, while we are disappointed with your work, we are not surprised. And I hope that you know that while you fill your lobbies with red cards and update your websites with resources to best suit our communities, it is the bare minimum, and it is not good enough. I hope that on top of this, I wanted to also bring up that there is something running through the Capitol Building and running through Capitol Hill right now. It is supported by Senator Sasha Rene Perez, and it is SB 98, also known as the SAFE Act. And I hope that you also bring it to the school system. And it is where the schools, like they do often with different reports, are required to discreetly notify communities that ICE has a presence in the community. And while it's under currently a right-wing committee, I hope that, you know, it passes and that it makes its way through. It's looking pretty good. It's passed pretty seamlessly, and it's supposed to pass in August. And so I hope you all remain updated on that and that you remember that these people are community members to us. They're family members to us. And while you are all on occupied, chew-mash land, which the city also constantly fails to recognize, I hope that you all remember that nobody is stolen, nobody is illegal on stolen land, and no one deserves to be taken from their families. Also, Mayor, your face is very telling as we go through our public comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Lindsey Romero, followed by Brian Merz, followed by Cesar Trugio. Speaking next, I have Cesar Trugio, followed by Nicole Wilson, followed by Brad McRoberts.
I'm Brian Merz, actually.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you.
I heard a lot of talk about home, and I think we all know how special it is to feel like this is our home, this is a very special place in the world. And, you know, I think the only people that should be able to decide who gets to live here is those people themselves, right? And I hope we can all move forward and agree with that. I was going to appeal to your empathy a little bit. I heard some empathy from you guys. That's great. But I, I think we need to go a little step further and appeal to ourselves of self-of-sense self-preservation. It's moving to a level beyond just empathy for our, for the, this is just stage one, right? They have a plan. This is just stage one in their plan. We can see what their next steps are going to be. We heard Blanca talk about Sud Karbhal and what happened in Carpenteria. If you look at ICE, actually DHSS's comment on, on what happened there, it's a very different story, and it reads like they're building a case. It's really scary. The things that our president has been saying lately about Adam Schiff and about Obama posting pictures of him being arrested, AI videos, what happened to Senator Alex Padilla, it's scary. We need to start getting creative about what we do as a response. It's hard to find ways to do anything, and I see that. I see you guys being creative today, and I appreciate that. We need to be more creative and find ways to protect people and to protect ourselves, really. Sheriff, I just, or Lieutenant, I just wanted to say, you do have a weapon against ICE, and I hope you use it, and it's your body cameras. They don't want those around them. If we videotape what happens, that is, can be used as evidence later. And I hope that you, you can be there, and I know that people don't trust you. A lot of people in this community don't trust. And that's a problem that you have to solve. It's not up to them to just all of a sudden trust you. We have to figure out how to make them trust you. What can you do differently to help them trust you? I myself have not trusted police because of things that have happened to me, and I can only imagine how differently that would be if I looked a different way. So I hope, I hope that you can find ways to get people to trust you and then do things like be there with your body cameras, because that's the kind of stuff we need. We need you to protect the people, and we need your body cameras. And one other thing I wanted to say about the thing in Carpenteria, it seemed to me like a pretextual warrant. I'm not a lawyer, I don't really understand this stuff, but I looked it up. It seemed like a pretextual warrant. It seemed like they were there to take illegal immigrants, but they came with a warrant that said something about human trafficking, which seemed like total BS, which seems like a pretextual warrant, which is unconstitutional. I don't know who can do something about that, but it's not me.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Cesar Trugio, followed by Nicole Wilson, followed by Brad McRoberts.
Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Cesar Trugio. I was born and raised in Santa Barbara. I now live in Galita. Well, it's hard to hear about some of the lies, I would say. So we've been patrolling the community on a weekly basis. And I want to touch on our demand number five. If y'all don't know, we want to talk about the ghost vehicles, the vehicles that ICE is using to come in and to scout. These are vehicles that don't have any license plates, or they change out their license plates, they cover their VINs. And so when y'all, when they say they're coming in with warrants and just getting people that are, with warrants, I have here vehicle codes that are, that they are violating. We talk about legally. So we are indigenous to this land, right? And we've been resisting since 1492. And we, we won't stop resisting. We always fight for our community with love, because hate doesn't work for us. And hate was brought to us. And so on top of our demands, like I said, I want to make sure that the police is working with the city, with our community to stop these ICE vehicles that are coming in and terrorizing our communities. Because 911 doesn't work for us. Historically, it has never worked for us, so el pueblo depende del pueblo. Thank you.
Okay, this is one final call for Lindsey Romero. Lindsey Romero, if you're out there, please step forward to the podium. Speaking next, I have Nicole Wilson, followed by Brad McRoberts, followed by Ally Briskie.
Hi, thank you for your time. My name is Nicole Wilson. I'm a pediatric speech-language pathologist. I do early intervention. I support individuals with neurodevelopmental differences in their homes. I also do SNCAL. And what I am desperately asking, as there are much more informed community members here who are providing information for tangible access, I just want the council to consider how we are communicating to our families, recognizing that there is a lot more than just the words that we say or post on a website, though I'm very grateful for the resources that are there, that it requires a level of trust and empowerment to our families to connect in the communication that they are using and the forms that make sense to them and the areas that they are. This means that if we have families who are not accessing the public spaces that we were before, it is the prerogative of our city to make sure that we are supporting families where they're at in the forms of communication that make sense to them and the modalities that make sense to them, whether that's written, picture, whether that is translated, whether that is doing an interpretive dance, I don't care the way that it is. What I care is that it is available, that it is happening, that it is more than once, and that it is genuine. I have, in working with individuals with developmental disabilities, there is already an area of marginalization that the communities that I work with exist in. It's already hard. Switching our forms of communication to make sure that we're accessing people who are already so burnt out and who are already so on the edge means that we have to do extra resources. And we need to be having feedback from those people, including all the feedback from the amazing representatives that we've had here. It needs to be the people who are not having the ability of coming to a council meeting. And I really suggest that we think about concrete measures that are shared with the public in order for the public to know. I thank you for your time. And in some ways, I am very encouraged by all the community members that have come out and shared their support. Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Brad McRoberts, followed by Ally Briskie, followed by Yolanda Perez.
Good evening. I don't have much to add, so much has already been said. But I am struck by the sense that shock and awe and fear, the tactics that have been used by ICE, by this administration to tear apart communities and families, they require consistent resistance. And it is in the small, it's in the acts of kindness, it's in looking at neighbors and greeting our neighbors as our neighbors, it's in extending a hand to someone you haven't met before. It's also in standing up for the big. If the moment calls for it, to put our bodies on the line, to stand together, to fight back. It's in being creative. You guys on council, mayor, you guys have to meet the moment and solve problems that are only going to grow as funding to DHS and ICE increases. It's in the businesses and our communities to join hands together. I mean, that sounds really cliche, but what can we do every day? What's the small thing? What's, what's the little thing this week? What's, what is it today? What can I do? Because we all have to meet the moment, and it doesn't matter as much. These meetings matter. But what we do when we leave this room, how we treat each other, how we respond, the onus is on all of us. It's on people in power, it's in people who don't have power. So thank you, thank you for your time. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Ally Briskie, followed by Yolanda Perez, followed by Dr. Marie Chavez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Perotti and the City Council members. My name is Ally Briskie. I'm a Galita resident, but I'm here speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara. We really felt compelled to express our deep concern, like everybody else here, about the ICE activity in our area. And we recognize and commend the critical response by our community members and the swift mobilization by City Council following last week's meeting. But we need to do more. As everyone in this room has said, we must do more. This is the fight of our lifetime. I believe that. We need to meet this moment with ferocity, with fearlessness, and creativity. That's what it deserves. The League is respectfully and strongly urging the city of Galita to work with the county and other city, nearby cities to achieve the following outcomes. Strongly encourage the sheriff's office to notify local organizations' rapid-response networks or other designate when they receive a deconfliction notice, as we've heard tonight, about ICE operations in the area. This may require actually vetting the purpose of the operation. Explore calling for an emergency proclamation to be issued at the city level, which will allow our local government to free up emergency funds, reduce liability for urgent decisions, and send a public signal of support for impacted immigrant communities. Commit additional resources toward legal defense, trauma recovery, and family support service to frontline organizations. We do support 805 Undocu Fund's request to county supervisors for the $1 million in emergency funding to immigrants' rights organizations. Align with California's police identification law and encourage the sheriff's office or to figure out a way to ensure that all federal officers involved in enforcement actions display their clear, visible identification and not obscure their identities. They can come into our communities unidentified, and it's fine? It's not fine. Encourage the sheriff's office, fire, and other service vehicles to create safety buffers for civilians during enforcement operations, following models recently implemented in Los Angeles and elsewhere in California. The League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara stands ready to assist the city with policy development, legal referrals, and ongoing community coordination. Thank you for taking decisive steps to protect our neighbors.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Yolanda Perez, followed by Dr. Marie Chavez, followed by Diego L.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti, council members. My name is Yolanda Perez. I'm a second-generation native of Santa Barbara, resident of Galita for over 40 years. But today, I'm going to speak as a volunteer with the Santa Barbara Food Bank. I've been a volunteer with the food bank after I retired from Santa Barbara County, where I worked there for over 40 years in child welfare. And I do bilingual intake. And I do bilingual intake here in the city of Galita on the second Saturday of every month. I've been doing this for quite some time. Over the last number of years, our numbers have increased every single Saturday with families coming to, to request food because of the high price of food. because of the high price of food. Many people are, well, most of the people that we speak with are hourly employees at nurseries, service industries. And one day that they lack work, it means a big difference. So, they come to the food bank, fresh produce, fresh vegetables, dried goods, baked goods, milk, different things that really helps them, once a month. In January of this year, our numbers were really good. In February of this year was the first time I was asked, is it safe for me to come? And I said, absolutely, no problem. We're here at the drive-up and walk-ups. Let me explain that. So, many people about, we had about 120 people walking, driving up, maybe 40 at that time. And so, we were encouraging people, oh, sure, you know, it's a little far. It's over there behind Cottage, Galita Valley Cottage Hospital. And they would walk down Hollister. By March, people were really worried. Are you sure it's safe? I assured them, absolutely, it's safe, no problem. By April, we were giving them the red know-your-rights card. Our numbers were going down. By May, our numbers were drastically reduced. In May, we had three people walk up out of 30, 40 before, in just one month. And I asked the women, because I've known these people for many years, so I got to know them, what happened to your comadre? What happened to your know-your friend? And they said to me, they're afraid to walk down Hollister. Now, these are mothers, these are grandmothers. This is Saturday morning. And these women, they were mostly women, are afraid to walk down Hollister Avenue to get food for their family. I just think you need to know this. I think it's the city council. I think you can do something about that. It's one Saturday a month to assure that people who are going, walking down Hollister, are safe to get food for their families. Last month, this earlier this month, I should say, it was canceled outright. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Dr. Marina Chavez, followed by Diego L., followed by Tina Scopacasa.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dr. Marina Chavez, and I want to thank you for holding this special meeting. So, first, as so many have already done, I just want to make really clear that I do not agree with the sheriff in accepting that Galita become a sundowner town. A sundowner town is when you're not able to go out of your house because of fear for your safety. If you want to know why people don't feel safe calling 911, I suggest you play back what you said tonight, and you'll have a good understanding of why people don't feel safe. Look, I'm third generation. My dad is a naturalized citizen. We're terrified. We have a family plan in case someone is taken, and we are all citizens. My fifth-generation best friend is worried. We're over here making jokes about, yeah, Lady Portis, we're going to have to find a translator to help us speak to the Mahekundals there because our Spanish is trash, okay? This is where we're at. The fear is real, and it is pervasive. Now, today, I joined the community in demanding ICE out of Galita because they are a major threat to public safety for all the reasons that we have been hearing today. Galita can keep our community safe by, one, allocating city resources to actively verify ICE presence; two, allocating city resources to alert community members of ICE presence in Galita; three, allocate city resources to create barriers to unconstitutional abductions; four, prohibit local law enforcement from collaborating with ICE; five, instruct local law enforcement to verify identities of people claiming to be ICE and to verify whether the warrants are legitimate and signed by a judge. This is something that activists are doing. This is something that is possible. Sheriff's can absolutely do this. And we can't stop there. We need to be as proactive, creative, and unequivocal as possible in defending public safety and the rights of all of our community members. Because guess what? The fascist federal regime and their thugs are not acting in good faith. They are not acting with integrity, and they are not living up to their oath to serving the public. This moment calls for all of us to understand that very clearly. Laws can be changed. The laws and the twisted interpretations of the law, the twisted interpretations of the gaps in the law that are creating this situation of very real state violence against targeted communities, that needs to be changed. Yes, there are limits, but there are also real gaps and lacks of clarity that you can get creative with. You've heard some great ideas today. Fascism is real. It is here. We need you to fight with us. We need you to fight for us, beside us. Don't give this regime the benefit of the doubt. Do not obey in advance. If the law is creating injustice, and it is, then we need to change it. We need to resist it. Let's get into good trouble together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Diego L., followed by Tina Scopacasa, followed by Charlie Dorado.
Buenas tardes, mayor and councilpeople. My name is Diego. I am a local here to Old Town Galita, Nectrin. I'm currently a PhD student at UCSB. And I came here to see how our representatives are going to rise up and defend the people that got you the chair that you're sitting in right now. I came, hopefully, to see something more creative and proactive. And I think I ended up seeing a lot of hands being washed, a lot of hands being tied, and even sympathy being expressed for how difficult bureaucracy is, for how difficult it is to manage. But no sympathy for how hard it is to live in fear, for how hard it is to even have to come here and voice something that should be obvious, right? I'm seeing people placing the value of a human on the work that they labor in, when in reality, they deserve it on their sheer humanity. No one deserves to live in fear, regardless of how hard they work, regardless of what they make for you to enjoy. They deserve it regardless, based on humanity, all right? I came here, hopefully, to see something more creative and rigorous out of elected officials and professionals. And I heard a lot of apologies about how hard it is and how my hands are tied. And it is hard, and it is going to take a lot of creativity. But why else did you take this job? If you thought it was going to be so easy? We made it a little bit easier for you. We came up with our own demands as community members, and I hope that you hear the underlying theme throughout these demands. There is fear viscerally living in our community, day-to-day mundane activities that should not engage people in fear, right? One, allocate city resources to actively verify ICE presence, which we already heard that they already know when they're going to be there, right? Allocate city resources to alert community members of ICE presence in Galita. Allocate city resources to act as a barrier to unconstitutional abductions. Prohibit local law enforcement from collaborating with ICE. And inaction is collaboration. You're just facilitating it. I'm not doing nothing. He's going to keep stabbing this guy, but I'm not doing, I'm not helping him. Therefore, the victim is going to feel the same way, right? Instruct local law enforcement to pull over vehicles that do not have plates. Anyone in this room would be pulled over, yet they are making it all the way into our neighborhood somehow with these plates with 5% limo tint on the front that they would get pulled over with otherwise, right? So, what else, what else can we get? We're offering you our time and ideas and stuff, but we want to see what our elected officials can offer us back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Tina Scopacasa, followed by Charlie Dorado, followed by Larry B. Next, I have Gareth Kelly.
Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Larry Barrett. Sorry about the handwriting. I'm here with members of the Steering Committee of Indivisible Santa Barbara, and we are proud members of the 805 Undocu Fund Coalition. I want to thank you for your displays of empathy. What we want is action. And that's, I can promise you, we are not going anywhere. We will be back next week and the week after that and the week after that until we get the kind of response that we need to this emergency. We have asked you to declare a state of emergency because this truly is an emergency. If there were a fire raging in the foothills, coming down on this community, if it was a flood, if it was a mudslide, I don't think we would have the same response from you. But this is the same thing. This is truly an emergency. What we call an act of God, you come forward, you would not rest until the fire was out, until the floods were abated, until your people were safe. What we don't have here is not an act of God. It's an act of Trump. It's the same response that we need from you. We are going to judge you on the actions that you take, the actions you take today, the actions that you take next week, the actions that you take the week after that. We will be back. You cannot stop. Our people are not safe. Your primary responsibility is public safety. Everything that we've heard from the sheriff's office today, a sheriff's office that, by the way, uses legal loopholes in SB 54 to cooperate with ICE at every opportunity. You don't have to believe me. Read their Truth Act report from 2024, 2023, 2022. It's all there in the sheriff's own words. Every opportunity that state law allows them to cooperate with ICE, they cooperate with ICE. Do you really believe that the members of this community are going to trust that same sheriff's office and call 911 when they're in trouble? You're asking for an awful lot if you think that's going to happen. You've heard our demands. You've heard the demands from the League of Women Voters. You've read the demands from ICE out of Galita. We all agree on the same fundamentals. We have put forward for you a program that you can follow. We need action. And that is what we're going to judge you for here, and we will judge you for that on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Charlie Dorado, followed by Gareth Kelly, followed by Kathy Baradas.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Our elected is here, our DA, sheriff, community. Gracias for all for being here. I'm an artist, and I do my fights with a brush or pencil or whatever. Just last week, we started an organization of artists called Chicano Hippo Gate. I'm also an activist here in the community. I've had about 10 people come to me. Quite a bit of them, they speak Nahuatl. They don't even speak Spanish that good, okay? I've had my brother, my cousin, my sister. They've been taken. I've told them, what, did you call the sheriffs? Some said yes, some said no. The ones that said yes, they said, but they never came, or the police, you know? They never came. Did they call you? No. Did you call the sheriffs or the police? They're afraid that they work with ICE. Now, let's not be naive. We know that brown people are being targeted. You know, you see the crossbow on the site of a scope. Imagine, I'm talking to you as an artist. Everyone that you see that's brown has a target, okay? What warrant do they have if you're standing at the bus stop, waiting early hours of the morning to get picked up by the patron, to go do gardening, to go clean someone's house, to go work in the field, to go take care of kids that are not even yours? Huh? What paper tells them that they had to get picked up? There's targeting, racial targeting, profiling. That's against the law. And it's being done. And people tell me, you know, Charlie, there's only so much that we can take, you know? And I say, hey, man, go with the teachings of Cesar Chavez, Martin Luther King, unviolence is the best way. And they're telling me, hey, they're getting sick and tired of it. If the law enforcement does not step up, then the community will step up and take it on their own hands. We don't want that. But there's only so much people can take till you break. And I think we're almost right there. So, I plead to you. Please, help the community, since that's what you're for, to protect and to serve and to maintain the peace. Let's do it. Think of your father if he came illegal one day here to this country. And thank God now, you are now a proud sheriff or work for the sheriffs. Let's just say, you know, I'm not saying that's your story. But what if? My dad came illegal to this country. I'm born here, and boy, did he suffer, you know? My grandfather too, and my other grandfather. He came on a visa because of the jobs he had here. And I just ask for the community to be strong and hold on because there's only so much they can take. Honestly, there's only so much a human can take till they take the law in their own hands. Do we want that? No, I don't think anybody here wants that. So, I just, I plead everybody here to think about that. When you go home, look at your children. Look at the nice home you have. That's being taken from somebody, okay? And women and children are being taken as a family, and some, even if the kids are not documented, they're getting left behind. And there's a lot of other stories, but I'll put those in artwork because you guys don't know these stories because they're not in the media, okay? I know a lot of people, and they've come to me, and they've talked to me, and they've told me these stories. So, I thank you all for my time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Gareth Kelly, followed by Josue, followed by Yolanda Mendoza.
Good evening, city council, Madam Mayor. You all know me. I'm Gareth Kelly, local resident. I'm also Public Engagement Commissioner for the city of Galita. I just want to start off by addressing the remarks the lieutenant made earlier. They were shameful and pretty disgusting, and it took our breath away outside. And I think you owe the community an apology. So, I hope you can reflect on those. Bit of background on me. I have a bit of a unique perspective in all this. I'm probably one of the newest United States citizens in the room, if not the newest United States citizen in the room. I got sworn in about six weeks ago. And unlike the DA who mentioned earlier that he doesn't know the fear of what it's like, I do know the fear because for the 25 years I've been here in the US, seven of those, I was undocumented. So, I know what it's like to be driving down the freeway and a cop's behind you, and you're terrified you're going to get a speeding ticket. And you're also terrified that you're going to, you know, be found out your immigration status. And one thing that became apparent a few weeks ago when I got sworn in was the oath of allegiance that I had to do is different than the pledge of allegiance that you all did earlier this evening. And in the oath of allegiance, I had to swear to protect this country from all threats, both foreign and domestic. Well, I'll tell you something. These supposed federal ICE goon squads going around, they are clearly a domestic threat to this nation and to our community. They are breaking the law. They are detaining US citizens, and they need to be arrested. Law enforcement swore an oath, probably similar to my oath, probably similar to the pledge of allegiance. It's their job to protect and serve this community. They say they don't get in the way and all this, what have you. We want you to get in the way. The community has made that very clear. If you don't get in the way, you are appeasing ICE. You are complicit in what they are doing. And you are not listening to the community that wants you to do more. And if you're not going to do more, then we need to replace you and find people that will. Because we have crossed the Rubicon. Where is the line? If you are law enforcement and not willing to do your job and protect this community, where's the line for you when they show up to a school and they want to drag your kids out of school because of how they look or their last name? Where's the line? You got to stand up. You got to do more. We've already passed it. I said earlier to someone that law enforcement need to get in the way. And he suggested that that would potentially lead to a civil war. We are past that point in this country. I'm new to this country, right? And you know, I'm not saying violence is the answer, of course not. But this country has a deep history of when laws are not always moral. And we change those laws. And sometimes the only way we get to do that is by standing up and getting in the way and making trouble, all kinds of trouble. And we need to do that as a community. Because guess what, law enforcement? If you do get in the way, we will be right there with you, behind you, and backing you every step of the way. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Kathy Baradas, followed by Alondra Mendoza, followed by Vanessa Teran.
Hi. I was told by my doctor just today, go home, take pills, put your foot up and rest. I'm not doing that. I've been working for the school districts for 12 years. I promised my son, my kids, I promised my kids that I was going to protect every single kid in whatever school I worked for. One day, my daughter called me, goes, Mom, I'm scared for you. I said, why? He goes, because I know if something would happen to any kid, you would take, go in front of them and give your life for them. And I would do it. I want all you guys, I don't know who has kids or not, but to think if one of your kids would come to me like my kids come every day and say, Ms. Cat, what will you do if ICE shows up at school? I would put my body right in front. There's crutches. I'm not supposed to go to work for three days. I'm going to go to work. Why? Because I want to be there in case something happens for my kids. I might catch a case because I will be using crutches to defend those kids. You know, I might be deported. Oh, well, I'll take a trip to TJ. And guess what? They're going to have to bring me back. It is what it is, right? Yolo, you only live once. So I will give you all my phone number. Please call me to give me advice on what I can tell those kids. Every time they tell me, Ms. Cat, we're afraid from our families. We're afraid for my mom. Every time they come and drop, take, bring us to school, they're going to, we're going to get stopped. Every time they're waiting for us after school, they're going to get detained. And then my daughter's like, Mom, how can you help them? If you look more paisa than anyone else? And Mom, stop wearing the Mexican stuff. I'm not going to stop. This is who I am. I'm Mexican. I was born in Mexico. They took me out of Mexico, pero they never took Mexico out of me. I will always be Mexicana, proud. Born Mexicana and proud by choice. So please give me advice. What can I tell those kids? And how can I go to sleep some nights that I cry because it's telling me this? And it's going to get worse. When I go back to school, guess what? It's going to get worse. And we don't have any instructions what to do if they show up at school. We haven't got told. We told what to do in the fire. We told what to do and many things. But we were never told what to do if ICE shows up at school. I need help. I'm screaming for help. And my kids are more important than my health right now, and I'm showing it. And please be kind and do something about it. Just don't stand there.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Alondra Mendoza, followed by Vanessa Teran, followed by Jaclyn Inda.
Mayor and council members. My name is Alondra Mendoza, a community advocate with Mixtequi Indigenous Community Organizing Project. A member of the 805 Immigrant Coalition and a member of the New Xavi Indigenous Community. Given the attacks our immigrant community is experiencing, we urge the City of Goleta to adopt Resolution 25, making a call to action to all of its federally elected representatives in Congress to advocate on behalf of immigrants who live and work in the city of Goleta. Farm workers across the Central Coast are being targeted and hard, as harsh immigration policies tear families apart. On July 10, parents were calling me. We got calls like every single second, reporting family members that were taken by ICE. And today I had a conversation with, with a mom who, who has a kid with disability, with intellectual disabilities. And as we hear more parents with kids that have Down syndrome, epilepsy, and other disabilities are deeply concerned. Not only about being separated from their kids, but also about their health and safety. They know it's not safe to, for them to bring their children with them as they wouldn't have the same access to essential health services. The trauma from this action is, actions is deep and lasting. Families also face huge challenges trying to understand what happens when someone is detained. Language barriers and confusing systems make it hard to get information or help. Farm workers feed our communities and the nation every day. Their safety and well-being should matter to all of us. We ask for your support and urging the county sheriff's office to keep the peace during ICE arrests, not to act against local residents. We ask you to appropriate at least 375,000 to nonprofit groups for immigrant legal defense, rapid response, and mutual aid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Vanessa Teran, followed by Jaclyn Inda, followed by Dahlia Khan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Vanessa Teran, and I'm here today on behalf of MYCOP as Director of Policy. For those of you who may not know, may not be familiar with our work, our organization advocates for the rights and dignity of indigenous and migrant communities through direct support, education, community organizing, and policy change in California's Central Coast. We're here today to urge the city to take action, to protect the very community that is a social fabric of our neighborhoods, our economy, and our shared future. We also stand in solidarity with the community members who were recently detained by ICE in Glass House, both in the city of Camarillo and Carpinteria, a violent operation marked by what we believe to be grave human rights violations. The indigenous and migrant communities have long endured the psychological implications by our broken immigration system. But this recent event escalated that trauma into outright state sanctioned violence as we have reports from those who were detained and then released that they were beaten. We have one report of a pregnant woman who was physically hit, who's currently two months pregnant and fears losing her child from a degree of inhumane conditions at the detention center where she's held at. One of the most heartbreaking consequences, a 10-month-old separated from their mother, a single parent who's desperately pleading to be reunited with her child. Yet no public agency responsible for child welfare or public safety has stepped in to support the reunification of this family. We also know of a young student who arrived in the US as a child and was detained prior to July 10th in this terms of the ICE raids and now faces deportation to a country where she has no family and she doesn't even know the name of her parents' hometown in Mexico. Like many youth in our community, she spends her summers working to help her family cover rent, food, and school expenses. Our indigenous farm worker community is living under fear. Some are afraid to go to work. Others go, not knowing if they'll return to see their children again. No one should live like this in our city, not anywhere. Please stand with us. We ask you to support this. This isn't just a policy decision. This is a matter of life or death.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Jaclyn Inda, followed by Dahlia Khan, followed by Roxanne M.
Mayor, Council, I'm Jaclyn Inda. I'm here on behalf of La Casa de la Raza. Casa is a part of the 805 Coalition, and we're proud members of it. I've sent you all an email in which discussed and talked about policies and procedures and things that you could adopt. But here's where I find inequity. I have been around policymaking in different regions, not only from district elections to gang injunctions to all kinds of stuff. But I was also around with the floods. And when there was that emergency, you didn't need a community to come out, to every single council in this local area to ask for support. So I ask that you consider looking at that emergency proclamation, not because of the hundreds of people who need it or because of the visceral response to try to help community, but to stand for what's right and know that you have not been equitable the way that you had when COVID hit, when floods happened, or when fires happened, even in this community. The response is not the same. Why an emergency proclamation? Because if the county had instituted an emergency proclamation, our schools would probably go into Zoom instead of children getting absences and going into truancy and activating the DA's response letter for it, which is what's going to happen. Because an emergency proclamation provides safety. Because an emergency proclamation provides your leadership. I know that the City Council stands with its people. I have seen it firsthand. When there was COVID, you, this council was the first to step up in all of our region to provide resource. So I know that you can do that when it comes to the mental health crisis that we are facing. Our community needs you to stand with us. And I could, and I know that you will. I know that you will. I have no doubt in my mind. Because every single one of you feels it just as desperately as all of those families who are now asking us to do a mobile food pantry with somebody's food truck just to get to homes instead of lines where they could be caught. So I thank you for your time and your consideration, and let's act swiftly.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Dahlia Khan, followed by Roxanne M., followed by Michelle Pizano.
Good evening, Mayor Perotti and Council Members. My name is Dahlia Khan, and I'm a first-generation American and proud lifelong resident of Goleta. And I cannot stay silent while ICE terrorizes our community. The recent ICE raids haven't just traumatized families. They've sent a message that no one is safe, not even children, not even people with documentation. That is not public safety. That is terrorism. And let's be clear. Being in the United States without legal documentation is a civil violation, not a criminal offense. Yet ICE continues to treat undocumented people as if they are dangerous criminals, using military-style tactics to intimidate, detain, and abduct them. We cannot pretend that this does not concern us all, immigrants and non-immigrants alike. It is the responsibility of the city and this council to protect its constituents. That means advocating for transparency, safety, and dignity in our communities. And while I understand that the council does not have the power to ban ICE from Goleta, you do have the power to make it crystal clear that they are not welcome here. You can send the strongest possible message that this city will not cooperate with them, will not stand by in silence, and will not allow our neighbors to be hunted down without resistance. You can empower our community with knowledge, with resources, and with protection so that ICE thinks twice before setting foot in Goleta again. We may not have federal power, but we do have people power. And we can make Goleta a place where raids are met with resistance, legal observers, cameras, and community rapid response teams, not fear. I urge you to adopt the resolution being presented today and support all the recommended actions, especially supporting Senator Alex Padilla's bill to ban the use of masks by ICE agents and require that they identify themselves during public enforcement action. And finally, to the families directly affected, I just want to say that you are not alone. We see you, we care about you. And I hope the City of Goleta has the conviction to show through its actions today that it supports and protects you. This is a moment for courage, for compassion, for justice. Please don't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Roxanne M., followed by Michelle Pizano.
Good evening, Council Members and Madam Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to just share real quick my story. As an American citizen, I can tell you that it was a long, costly, and mentally difficult journey. As I, as before, I gained this status. I lived in fear as an undocumented immigrant, then as a permanent resident, because I still couldn't vote. I became an American citizen right before COVID struck, December 2019, when I could finally feel like I no longer live in fear and with full rights. Tyranny strikes back. I believe anyone, regardless of the immigration status, should walk free without any concerns of getting harassed or kidnapped. Racial profiling is real, and a US passport might not matter. I come from a country that experienced terrorism. Other immigrants from other countries have escaped violence, civil wars, and dictatorships. But we share one thing in common. We saw this country as the place to live peacefully. As a child who watched violent attacks happening daily, there were curfews where I was called to get home before sunset or whenever I heard bombs going off. Now, when I just heard about the sundown rule or whatever it is, it is triggering. I can tell you that these raids, illegal kidnappings, are also terrorist attacks. Children are losing their parents. People are being disappeared into detention centers far away from their families. And I heard about a child being sent to the Alliguer concentration camp. So no child deserves to live this type of trauma. I've been dealing with PTSD for years. But can you imagine how many more about to go through the pain and request accessible, low-cost mental health treatment? What can you do for all the people, all of us, regardless of their status? And I remember the Isla Vista mass shooting happened. Over 10 years ago, the energy to protect the people was high. Where is that energy? Where is the serve and protect effort from local law enforcement? Because as community members, we are doing it. We're bringing it. So please take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my last speaker slip is Michelle Pizano. And I currently see three hands raised in the Zoom webinar.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle Pizano, you're speaking next. And as a reminder for the Zoom attendees, if you do wish to speak, please raise your hand. We will call upon you. Madam Mayor, do you wish to go out to Zoom public comment?
Excuse me?
Would you like to go out to Zoom public comment, Madam Mayor?
Is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, yes. We have three hands currently raised.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Speaking first, I have Lisa Sloan. Lisa, if you could please accept the prompts you're about to see and kindly remember to unmute yourself. Hi, Lisa, you're still muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Sloan, a longtime resident of Goleta. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to comment and maybe to give a little different perspective because I see a blight of human trafficking and other vices perpetuated by drug cartels that are allowed to remain in our beautiful city, and it must be stopped. That's why I think it's important to support the work of the US Immigration and Customs Enforcement officers who work to protect American citizens and our immigrant friends who enter the country legally. Okay? And, you know, I haven't heard anyone talk about the over 300,000 missing border children, okay? I'm going, earlier this month, ICE officers arrived with arrest warrants against individuals with prior criminal convictions. Okay? You know what, you guys? You can look on the ICE website, the Homeland Security website. And I found this information, okay? So they named the names of many of the people who were arrested back on July 10th. And so one of them was a rape convicted rapist, okay? One of them had attempted first-degree murder, was a convicted kidnapper. There's names. I'm not going to name their names, but you can see their actual names on the website. So they're not withholding information. They're providing information about their efforts to protect citizens. If they give a heads up, like what? If they give a heads up, like what happened in Carpinteria, their efforts were tipped off, and over 500 protesters showed up. But what about the 14 children that were rescued from trafficking? These are human traffickers. Many of them convicted, human traffickers, from other countries. One was convicted of willful child cruelty. These people were criminals. You guys, we don't need to be afraid of ICE. They're helping our community. They're making it safer. And I just so appreciate your stance, the city council. I really appreciate it, because I see that you're being very fair in your treatment of this issue. So I just want to thank you for that. And hearing the different officials come and speak was very helpful. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Kyle Richards, followed by Ethan Bertrand.
First, I want to thank you for holding this meeting tonight to bring to light this community crisis. And I encourage you to approve the resolution. I also hope that you will pursue other actions to oppose the illegal, immoral, and unconstitutional anti-immigrant efforts of the federal government. As you know, I was elected to represent the Galita community on the Santa Barbara City College Board of Trustees, Area 2. And although I'm not speaking for the college tonight, I can assure you that we are committed to creating educational environments where all students can learn and pursue advancement opportunities to better themselves. We strive to make sure that the college is accessible to everyone in the community, a place where anyone can attend, to earn a degree, to get a better job, or for personal enrichment. The strength of our community is based on the degree to which we allow all members to meet their full potential. The ICE raids and anti-immigrant activities are working against our efforts. There is a chilling environment on our campuses, where some students now live in fear that ICE could show up in their class. The college does not cooperate or share information with ICE, but we have seen the negative impact that this fear of ICE has had on our students, as well as our faculty and staff. I want you to know that I stand with our community in opposition to the inhumanity of these federal actions, which are based on hatred, on racism, and xenophobia. I appreciate the courage of all the people who were here tonight, sharing their stories and speaking out. And I'm outraged and heartbroken at how our community is being attacked. I encourage you to do what you can to protect the safety and dignity of our people. We must all take what actions we can against the targeting of our friends, our colleagues, our neighbors, and family members who now live in fear. The threat is real, and it is growing, and we must act now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Speaking next, I have Ethan Bertrand, followed by Steve Miley, followed by AK.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Ethan Bertrand's here, Galita school board member, here tonight on my own behalf as a concerned neighbor and as the son of a Venezuelan immigrant. I'm sorry I cannot be with you in person tonight. Like you and trustee Kyle Richards, who just spoke, my school board colleagues and I are also getting messages from our shared constituents who are worried sick. You heard from Assistant Superintendent John Shetler earlier on behalf of the district. As Mr. Shetler mentioned, your school district is doing everything possible to keep our students and families safe. State law prohibits schools from collecting information on immigration status and sharing it with federal authorities. Schools will not voluntarily cooperate with requests from immigration enforcement. I now want to speak to the heavy-handed and militarized mass immigration enforcement campaign that has harmed community members, taken away parents of young children, defied the Constitution, and trampled on the right to due process. Kids and families are scared to go to school, to go to the doctor, to access food assistance, as you heard earlier. As the president of the Major County Sheriffs of America, Santa Barbara County Sheriff Bill Brown is in a critical position to call for the de-escalation of the Trump administration's mass deportation campaign. This is a moment where our sheriff's constituents are counting on him to advocate for our interests. We need our sheriff to do everything in his power as president of the Major County Sheriffs of America to publicly push back on the current enforcement campaign that is harming the health and safety of our community, state, and nation. Given that the city of Galita contracts with the sheriff's office for policing services, the city council and members of our community at large can also encourage our sheriff to stand up for immigrants as he advocates for policy change in Washington, D.C. in his role as president of the Major County Sheriffs of America. Our sheriff is in a position, a unique position, to make a difference. Finally, I want to thank you, Mayor and council, for holding this important meeting tonight. It's incredible to see our community come together during these most difficult times, and I know we'll stand together. Again, Ethan Bertrand, school board member, speaking on my own behalf. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, I currently see two more hands raised. So speaking next, I have Steve Miley, followed by AK.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Miley. I've been in Santa Barbara, Galita, for 40, over 40 years. Thank you so much for holding this event tonight and letting everyone speak what's happening. I support the resolutions. I think it's insane that there is primarily one man, Stephen Miller, in the Trump administration, whose racist attitudes are creating this trauma that's hitting our country. But the important thing that I want to say right now is that we need to, you need to, act today to help protect our community. It is going to be so much harder to protect our community in three months and six months and a year. Any steps that you can do now are going to be great. So thank you so much for taking action now. It's going to get a lot harder in the future. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Steve Miley.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last hand I see raised, AK. Please accept the prompts you're about to see and kindly remember to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ella. I'm born and raised in Galita. I actually remember the day that the city was incorporated, and I continue to be a proud member of the community. And I'm so proud to see my neighbors come out today to stand up for the humanity of our neighbors. I just want to echo those who have spoken before me emphasizing that people should be protected and have the right not to live in fear, not because of how they serve our economy, but because we are all human. Criminals wear masks and hide their identities when doing crimes. At the very minimum, ICE agents need to publicly identify themselves. I'm also horrified at the comments coming out of the sheriff's office. I hope that the city is able to accept this resolution and also, adopt this resolution and also support Senator Padilla's bill as very first steps in the continued efforts to support our community and our neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to council. Do we have any more questions of anyone? Comments? Excuse me? Okay. Go ahead, carry on.
Chief, could you come back up?
Yeah.
Thank you. There was something that had been on my mind, but it was said very eloquently by one of the public speakers, that I would ask, if you can't give an answer now, perhaps you could take it back to the sheriff. There was a comment made about the ability to utilize body cameras. And that was something several years ago, when we had Sheriff Brown in the, on Zoom, because we weren't meeting in person then, where we were really asking for a lot of data on law enforcement outcomes, and we were asking for body cameras. And you have, now, we're at a place where, I think, just about everybody has body cameras at the sheriff's department. So I wanted to ask if you could bring back to the sheriff a policy that perhaps would be an improvement on what we have now, which is kind of a hands-off policy. Could we at least have a stand, monitor, and record policy, where you're not interfering with law enforcement operations, but you are creating an administrative record of what is happening, which could be helpful to the sheriff's stated intent earlier of, if there are people out there that are impersonating agents, that would create an administrative record that would allow it to be more easily conducted, an investigation by the sheriff's department, that could potentially lead to people who are impersonating ICE or are doing other illicit things to be able to actually be apprehended. Is that something that you could bring back to him as a request? I recognize we would need probably three or more of us for that to be an actual request, but is that something you'd be willing to do if that was the will of the council?
Yeah, we can have the discussion. I would just say that our department policy is if we respond, we record. That's flat out, that's what our role is. As far as deliberately responding and recording, I think that's a sheriff decision. I agree. But I also remind the public that if you're in a public place, that's publicly accessible to anybody. Anybody can record. And I think we see a lot of that with the media. We see a lot of that with the different social media outlets. So having that codified in a sheriff's stance or policy, I think, could be done other ways. That could be done freely as soon as people leave here, and they already do it. So. But I could talk with the chain and see where we are with that, but.
Okay. And I guess just one last thing. I know it's never a bad idea to have a plan. I know it's never a bad idea to be with a trusted friend or loved one. But I would, I would ask that, given the many large public gatherings that we have in this community, fiestas coming up, there's other, other events that are happening in this community, you know, let's just reflect on, are there, are there ways that we can improve the safety of this community without putting the burden on individual members of this community, some of whom are very vulnerable, to keep themselves safe? Let's try and come up with some strategies where we can have, like, true, true partnership. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on, on your idea. Would you be suggesting, and if, if, so, a member of the public, so we all feel like we need to all do something, right? So a member of the public sees something happening right in front of their eyes, and then they would record. They would video. I mean, if there wasn't a sheriff around, but they would report, they would video it and then report it. But where would they report it to?
So my understanding is while we are a two-party consent state, for the most part, it's pretty hard to prosecute an individual member of the community for recording things that they see happening in public spaces. There's not a presumed right to privacy. What I was actually talking about is, if you're a member of the community, going back to what we discussed earlier, and you are afraid that someone's impersonating ICE, someone is harassing you, someone is trying to put you in their car, if they call law enforcement, there's been some debate about to what extent law enforcement would get involved. And what I'm saying is, if we could have a policy where the law, where law enforcement would respond in those situations, and if they're, if they're not comfortable intervening, at least use their body cameras to record and create an administrative record. I think one of the reasons we argued, and had a major discussion with the sheriff several years ago, is because we are very concerned about disparities in law enforcement outcomes, based on the limited data we had at the time. And we pushed very hard for the sheriff's office to do, not just the work of acquiring the cameras, but just as important, the, the work of acquiring the equipment needed to store the recordings and have them preserved and protected and, and safe from being hacked or something like that. So I feel like this is kind of in keeping with some things that we've done as a council earlier.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
I support that. Mayor Pertram Caston?
Hi, I did have, I'm glad you're here. Additional question. So my understanding is, and to, that we're, in essence, like a sanctuary state, that SB 54, California Values Act, essentially prohibit the ability of local law enforcement to collaborate or coordinate, or to cooperate with ICE. But one of the speakers was also describing something called the TRUTH Act, which suggested that there might have been differences. Could you explain what, are there loopholes, as one of the speakers said? Are there certain circumstances? What, what's the situation with that?
So my understanding is with the TRUTH Act, it's a reportable outcome from the custody component of the sheriff's office that talks about different notification processes and involvements of undocumented, right? There's very strict guidelines as far as what's reported, but it requires the sheriff's office to report that publicly to the board of supervisors. Each county does it differently, but in, in essence, it's, this is what we did. This is how we worked with those agents, agencies, and now we're reporting it publicly. So that would be your criminal detainers, the criminal arrests, and things of that nature.
Okay.
So it's a reportable outcome.
And those, so in other words, yours, the circumstances of your coordination with ICE is in the case where it's a criminal arrest? And the, I remember with sanctuary cities, the restriction was that local cities would avoid any kind of collaboration or holding somebody for ICE if there wasn't some criminal offense involved. Is that right? And could you clarify what, what you can do and what you can't do?
So SB 54, the Values Act, basically says that you cannot use local or state resources to aid in immigration enforcement. I mean, it's plain and simple, that's what it does.
Under all circumstances.
Correct. There is a component, which then derives from the TRUTH Act component, which allows for certain cases of reporting, and essentially, they're treated like criminal warrants, right? So I think it was mentioned earlier that there's two different parts or ways immigration customs enforcement operates. They have the civil warrant or the administrative warrant, and they have a criminal warrant. With the TRUTH Act reporting, it's in compliance with that criminal warrant, which we have felony warrant, some kind of criminal action, some kind of criminal requirement, signed by a judge, pre-complaint, whatever. It's a criminal action criminal warrant. And that's what is handled and reported. If it's administrative or civil in nature, we don't touch it. So they might be in custody. I guess I should add, they could be in custody for other charges, but they're not being held, detained any further, based on that civil or administrative warrant.
So, okay, administrative warrant, there's no coordination in any sense with ICE, but there is coordination, then, with ICE in the context of when there's a criminal warrant? Is that it?
So that's the.
That's what's reported in the TRUTH Act?
Correct, like any other warrant, if someone is booked on a criminal warrant, that, that warrant is the reason for the booking, right? And that warrant can be done with on view, it could be done with different situations, but it's a criminal warrant. Following the rules and policies that custody has, and I can't speak to them because I'm not an expert in those, those rules or policies, is there is a notification process with the warrant that does, it's automated, has nothing to do with us. And then at that point, the person being held on the warrant can be transferred into whoever's custody, right? We've done it with marshals, we've done it with FBI, we've done it with all kinds of different federal warrants. The only difference is, is now we're inserting immigration customs and enforcement in there, which we traditionally have not done before, in very limited circumstances. And if you look at the numbers from last year's reporting, we're talking about like a fraction of a percent of the amount of incarcerated people were transferred or released under those criminal warrants. Very small percentage.
Released to ICE.
However, that's the, you could debate the term release, and I think that was kind of one of the point of contention with the board of supervisors' hearing last November, I believe it was, or December. Basically, is we release the person, and ICE will take custody of them, whether that happens outside our facility or inside our facility. But again, I'm not an expert in that. That's my understanding of the process.
But ICE is, in other words, notified of the availability of the person, whether it's inside or outside, and they come and pick them up.
Only for the criminal warrant, for the extradition component or the transfer component. But that's, again, that's what we do with all outside agency warrants. They're just added now to the process.
Okay. And I guess one other question, I was unclear about the, so you get notified when there is the presence of ICE in the community. Speaking, yeah, all the law enforcement, federal law enforcement, but we're focused on ICE tonight. How detailed is it? What information do they give you? How specific is it? How specific is it?
It's not very specific at all. Number one, outside agencies come into our area, they'll make the notification of where they're going to be and a point of contact, typically.
So they do say where they're going to be, like we'll be at Home Depot?
Not that specific, they'll give user geographical areas, but again, it depends, right? The federal government's a huge, huge beast, lots of moving parts, lots of pieces. And I think there, it's safe to say that there's bare minimum information, and sometimes agents, case agents, whoever, will provide more information or less information, but it's typically the location and the point of contact. Sometimes they call us when they leave, sometimes they don't. You know, the communication, it's good, but it could be better.
So when you say they give you the, in the location, are they, how general is it? Do they just say Old Town? Or they, how more, how, you said it's not Home Depot, how specific is it?
They won't say we're coming to 123 A Street. They say we're going to be in the area of A and B Street.
Okay, so it's hard to kind of infer whether they have a warrant, for instance, or they're just swooping in for whatever, is that right?
Well, that depends, hey, we're going to be doing the surveillance in this area.
Oh, okay.
Right? Or we're going to be, we're looking for a person who's wanted, right? They don't, because they know of the different restrictions that we have, they don't provide a whole lot of actual information because it doesn't really matter to us. What we need to know is if something happens, a foot chase or something that endangers the public, that they're there, and when we respond, we expect to see a certain dress, appearance, right? Plainclothes officers, officers with markings, external vests, whatever, it's a heads-up for us if something does go, does go wrong, or something does happen that endangers the public, that we respond to it. Typically, they come with all the resources to handle it because they know we won't help. We will only get involved if public safety is at risk.
But then they, if they tell you surveillance versus a particular person or something like that, you have a sense of whether there's likely a warrant involved, or it's just a, you know, kind of fishing trip?
I can tell you just from my professional experience, I've done surveillance many of times, and it just really depends.
And I guess we had a lot of questions also about these so-called ghost vehicles and so What are the rules, what are the laws, what are the, you know, what, what governs cars that have no license plate? I mean, do you automatically know, there's a car with no license plate, hands-off? Or do you pull up to the car with no license plate and ask, you know, show me some identification? Or what's the process there?
Really just depends, right? If there's an enforcement context to it, or if there's a notification context to it, that's kind of a complicated question to answer. I could tell you in general, generally speaking, there is the Vito Code, and I think that was mentioned earlier, that outlines certain requirements, but there's also exceptions in that Vito Code, right, for certain activities, covert activities. So to say that we need to go and stop every car that doesn't have a license plate, that's really tricky to do because there's a lot of, you know, our community members drive around with new cars, new plates, paper tags that go missing. So I mean, it's just really kind of a broad brush.
We have pictures, we could give you.
It's okay.
We're not buying it.
Okay. No, I guess.
Please, we, we listened already to your, what you had to say, we know. It's our turn to ask questions.
All right. Thank you.
We're out there in the community, we're not getting paid.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the other, oh, Luz.
No, I'm.
You, I changed my mic, okay. No. Okay, so I guess we have, if there's no more questions, that we have some recommendations, and I think there are how many? Six, seven? And, and then we also have the resolution. Any of the council members want to touch base on any of the requests as far as the suggested six? Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to thank everybody who participated today for speaking, and, you know, I know some people may have had work or other obligations, so I'm grateful for those who could be here and to also speak for those who might have been afraid to come and be here. In terms of, I would certainly support all the recommendations, one, one through six. I think it may be worth investigating in terms of the, the lawsuit that's currently pending, if, it might be helpful if staff could bring back if we could participate in terms of filing a brief in support, and maybe just some more information about, you know, what are the, the practical realities of participating in a lawsuit or not, you know, and, and, you know, what that would mean for the city. But I think at the very least, you know, I think we'd support filing some kind of briefing in support of that, that action. I know these groups do a lot of resource-intensive work in terms of, you know, building, building a case, having witnesses, all of this underlying work that they're doing in, in support of these cases. So I'm just not sure what would be required if we were to intervene as a city, if we're not prepared to, to make that case right now. I think we should at least consider the, the briefing. In terms, and then I also have sort of some separate questions in terms of opportunities that we have to provide financial resources. I strongly support the city taking steps to provide financial resources to respond. I wasn't sure, there's been some recommendations of reprogramming, other funding. I wanted to know from staff whether or not we have any, we had already taken budget action, and I didn't know how much other groups might already be, you know, relying on this budget decision we already made. Do we, do we have contracts in, in place? What, I guess, what flexibility do we have in terms of that reappropriation? I don't know if staff could respond.
Sure, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Smith, I'm looking on page three of the staff report, and, and as Councilmember Smith mentioned, staff just threw out a couple ideas, we did just prove it to your budget, so we're in the beginning of the fiscal year, but we threw out two ideas of sources that could be reprogrammed. The childcare line item for $250,000, and economic development initiatives, $150,000. And for the most part, none of those funds have been, none of those monies have been allocated or contracted. I think maybe $15,000, $16,000 of the economic development money has already been kind of promised or for the, you know, we're already looking ahead to next year for the first Meet Me in Old Town event. I think we are going to do some rethinking of those events based on the experience this year, but I do think those were set up so that maybe a commitment was already made to one out of that, out of those funds. So for the most part, if you add those two together, $250 plus $150, $400,000, and maybe only, you know, $15,000 to $20,000 is spoken for.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then I also see that there's a recommendation to, to take some of the decision-making on that back to, back to committee. I have, I admit that I have some, some trepidation about just, just the time it may take to go through the committee process, but I'd welcome feedback from my fellow council members there. But I would, I, I fully support the resolutions, the recommended six steps, and I, I support the city allocating budget to this response.
Okay, thank you. Catherine Reyes, Martine.
Thank you. I have some comments, and I wrote them down to try to keep me on, on track, and it's been a really heavy and kind of emotional, you know, couple months. So I'm, I'm always so impressed when people come up and give public comment without choking up. I can't promise that I will, I will do the same, but just want to thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and, and at our previous meetings. Thank you to staff who's been working on researching and preparing the information for us tonight and for the ongoing dialogue that we've had. Sadly, I don't think this is going to be the only time or the last time that we're all gathered here on this topic or other topics that are going to affect our community and that are going to come up. So it's important for us to have this discussion and talk through how, how we can be responsive and effective as a council. This has been a really challenging and difficult time for many people in our community, and for me, it's been personally impactful. I am an immigrant, and I'm the granddaughter of a bracero farm worker, and it's deeply meaningful for me to be an American citizen. No administration is going to take that from me. It's been gut-wrenching to see images and videos of people being chased through farm fields, through car washes, through streets, of mothers crying out for their children, of children left behind, of US service members having their parents detained or themselves detained. When I see those images, it's a mirror. They look like me, the children that are left behind look like my children. So it's inescapable for me not to feel deep empathy and outreach for what they're going through and understand the real fear that is pervasive in Latino communities and families right now, and we've heard that tonight, even if they are US citizens. The threat and perception of being detained or of family separation is shattering the sense of safety in many, many parts of our community. And there are other real impacts too, that affect us all. When large parts of our community are scared to go to the doctor, to the grocery store, to work, or just to be out in the community, when children go to school and live day in and day out with the fear that their parents or grandparents won't be there when they get home, when people are afraid to report a crime or call on local law enforcement when they need them, that makes us all less safe. It makes us all less healthy and less connected as a community. So I do want to say to people in our community who are not personally affected by this, you may not be impacted at all, or you may not know how you feel about what's going on, I urge you to have empathy for your neighbors. I ask that you see the humanity and dignity of the people in your community, in our community. They are your neighbors, they are the kids and families in your kid's school, you celebrate alongside them at community events, they sit next to you in church on Sunday. Please see them and support them, speak up for them. And I've seen so many of our community members do that tonight, and I'm so proud of that. Okay, that was the hard part. So that brings me back to what, what can we do? I'm, I'm nothing if not practical, and I want a checklist, and I want to, to know what we can do. I believe one of the roles we can have as a city council and a city government is to try to be the calm in the storm. We can model behavior and strength of character that is rooted in respect for one another and a commitment to take care of our residents and support them. So I also want to say something very briefly in Spanish, and I'll translate for myself afterwards so I don't mess things up for our interpreters. Quiero hacer un breve comentario en español. Mi primer idioma es el español y como ya he dicho soy inmigrante. A nuestra comunidad inmigrante de Goleta quiero que sepan que seguiré trabajando para apoyarlos, representarlos y ser su voz. Prometo que seguiré haciendo todo lo posible para garantizar la seguridad de nuestra comunidad para todos. To our Goleta immigrant community, I want you to know that I will keep working to support you, to represent you, to be a voice for you. I promise that I will keep doing all I can to ensure that our community is safe for everyone. So again, I appreciate what staff has put together for us today, I support the resolution, I support all six of the recommendations. More specifically, you know, to the question of allocating funds, I, I want to hear what the rest of council feels. I know there was a recommendation of $75,000. I would support allocating $100,000 from the $250 we have budgeted for childcare as a start. That would leave $150,000 in place for childcare and economic development. We did recently have an economic development subcommittee meeting. We did in broad strokes outline how we would plan to spend that. I don't think most of that was kind of set in stone, but we did look at our economic development strategic plan, and we did kind of make plans for allocating those funds. But I do think as a start with $100,000, I would support, I'm, I'm again, open to hearing what others think. I had thought that the Human Services Committee, if we were looking for a committee to kind of flesh out how we allocate funds, what organizations, that seemed like the most appropriate. I understand the, the urgency of expediency. I think we have shown as a council that even when we've taken a step like this, we are able to be nimble and quick. So I'm happy to hash out all those details with council tonight if we think we have the, the time and information, but if not, I'm part of the Human Services Committee, I can meet tomorrow, I can meet, you know, as soon as we need to, to hash that out. I think that's a start. I did have one additional suggestion that I did talk to our city manager about, it's kind of twofold, on this concept of how do we keep this going? I want to encourage, one, our city staff leadership, and, and this is a suggestion for the mayor, to continue the dialogue with our regional partners, Board of Supervisors, Santa Barbara City Council, Carpinteria City Council, so that we can have a consistent and unified message to residents on the South Coast. And additionally, I, I think we need a venue to continue the dialogue and hear directly, in particular, from nonprofit service providers in Goleta. So my suggestion would be to convene a roundtable where organizations can share with the city how they're being impacted, and then as a group, that can be a forum to share information for the city to, to have some follow-up if appropriate and response and further information, you know, coming back to council. Some examples of those organizations, I think we've heard in public comment today, and, and the comment we received include LEAP, the food bank, Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics, Communify, the Boys and Girls Club, Goleta Union School District, Santa Barbara Unified School District, there could be others. I think there's a role for the city to play to bring those groups together as, as a group to, to share more information and talk more about the impacts. It can, this can start with an initial meeting, then perhaps it's some kind of a quarterly meeting or other frequency. This roundtable could be convened also by the Human Services Committee, but I'm open to hearing anything, any other comments on that from my council colleagues. I just think we need to be prepared to continue responding to the effects of, of the immigration raids on public health, mental health, education, and basic needs. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carriaco.
No, don't do that.
No clapping.
Oh, you were so good up till now. Councilmember Carriaco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I, I second that notion, she deserves it. Maybe it's because I specifically represent the Old Town, Goleta neighborhood, but I take what's happened to our community, not just this last couple months, the last couple of years, but going back even further. It's just hard not to take it really personally. I live in Old Town, the people that are being impacted by these actions are my neighbors. There was a sign that was being held up that didn't just frame immigrants as our workforce, they framed them as our neighbors and framed them as our friends. They framed them as our neighbors and framed them as our friends. Friends. It's a really powerful word, friends. It's a word that so many of us can relate to, you know. Almost everybody has a friend, I would imagine, and sometimes our lives are less enriched when we feel alone and we feel like we don't have friends. And I was thinking about that sign out there because there are so many people, I think, out in this audience right now that feel alone, and they're angry, and you're right to be angry, whether you're angry at the federal government, whether you're angry at the state or the county, or even the city. It's okay to be angry. It's okay to hold us accountable. It's okay to ask us for more. Even if we're doing more than some others, it's okay to ask us for more. It's okay to demand that we do more. We can always do better. We can all do better if we work together. I support what Councilmember Smith was speaking about in terms of joining, finding a way to join the suit. I think filing a brief, an amicus brief, would seem to be the kind of the minimum, but I would like to kind of hear from our attorney, not necessarily tonight, but you could do a little research and find out what can we do there. Is there danger in us actually joining the suit, or would it be better for us to just do the brief? But I would like to do something. I would like to do something that says to immigrant communities up and down the South Coast and Southern California that we stand with them, that we share their pain, that we share their frustration, that we share their anger, that we share that feeling of indignance about what's happening and what's continuing to happen and what's probably going to continue to happen based on the federal budget and choices that were made there. I also like the idea of using the childcare funds as a floor, not a ceiling. I think 100,000 is a great number to start with. I don't want to put a lot of restrictions on the community that may apply for those funds or the committee members that may want to allocate them in the way that they best see fit. I just want to say I trust my colleagues, and I'm sure that they will make great recommendations. I was really struck at the Carpinteria Council meeting. We haven't talked a lot about the Carpinteria Council meeting, but it was just so overwhelmingly powerful to stand in that audience and watch some of the speakers. And one of the speakers, and this was touched upon tonight as well, talked about the incredible cost to our community's mental health, the trauma, the trauma that is going to stay with families, stay with children, not just for today or tomorrow, but for years. And I can't think of any better, higher purpose for the childcare funds that we set aside year after year in a way that a lot of other communities don't. I can't think of a higher purpose than to use a good chunk of that money to ensure that our children and families get the mental health support that they need, get the legal defense support that they need, get whatever help they need. Some of that money will still be able to be set aside for childcare because, let's face it, a lot of the people that are taking care of our children are part of these same impacted communities. The parents that rely on that childcare are these same impacted communities. And I got to tell you, as the chair of the organization that does Head Start, when I heard that there was a parent, a Head Start parent from the Carpinteria Head Start site at Glass House, being protected by their employer, locked in to protect them, boy, did I have some powerful emotions going through my mind, some really powerful emotions. So we can do more than one thing at the same time. We can look after our childcare providers. We can look after our children and families, and we can allocate a lot of money, a lot of money, to help families in a different way, in a way that we couldn't have anticipated just a few weeks ago, or perhaps we could have anticipated and we should have thought ahead. I don't know. But just to close, I think getting to policy, there's a few other things I want to bring up. And some of these have been voiced in emails that we've received or in comments made tonight. I would say fee waivers for city facilities that want to do know-your-rights workshops or other types of community education and community defense. We had a know-your-rights workshop on Sunday. We got some people to come out. Maybe that can become a more regular, consistent thing, and maybe people will start to feel safer to come out to those kinds of workshops because they know the cities behind them. Another suggestion, you know, La Casa de la Rosa can't do it all. You know, could we have some space at the community center, be set aside, that would store food and supplies, that some of our community partners could go out and deliver? Because, and you know, let me just kind of diverge quickly. The job of the council and the way the meetings are actually kind of set up is there's the part of the meeting where you listen, there's the part of the meeting where you learn, and then there's the part of the meeting where you lead. And we're now at the part where we lead. And so I was originally going to say, let's do food distribution at the community center, but after hearing some of the comments tonight, I'm not so sure. What if people roll up and try and scare people away? So let's have perhaps food storage at the community center so it's more easy to reach our Goleta community. But maybe for the moment, let's not look at doing food distribution thereafter what I heard tonight. So that's kind of me pivoting because of what I heard. We've already talked about the money. I will just, you know, add to what was said earlier, Immigrant Legal Defense Fund, Center, you know, other organizations. I won't say some of them because I'm involved with them, but I'm sure there's some good organizations out there that staff can research and have been mentioned already. I would like to direct our staff to work with our law enforcement partners to ensure that they respond to calls of residents who are being harassed and provide some kind of a monitoring presence with active body cameras. I would like to direct our city manager to start the, probably already starting to work on this anyway, there's going to be the next round of negotiations on the sheriff's contract. Let's take steps to ensure that the next contract includes language that will help clarify and empower for local law enforcement what they need to hear so that they can take appropriate steps to protect our community members from being illegally profiled or harassed. In particular, I do want to call on the sheriff to use his power and influence with the Major County Sheriff's Association of the United States. He's the president. He's an influential person. He is a subject matter expert, and if he were to speak up and say, you know what, we need to do this a different way, I think a lot of places in this country would be talking to their members of Congress a little bit differently. I want to support the strong resolution that our staff crafted in record time. Thank you. And, you know, I would like to explore, you know, to what we were saying earlier, I'd like to explore some ways that we can support other cities that are litigating against these aggressive federal interventions in partnership with the ACLU, and I would say an amicus brief to start. That would be the floor. Maybe there's a way to do something stronger. And then lastly, I would like staff to provide us some input on what was said earlier about having an emergency proclamation versus what we're considering tonight. Just because we're doing some things tonight, that doesn't have to be the end of the story. If staff could look at whether or not an emergency proclamation would be more appropriate, would be more forceful, would be more meaningful, and would ultimately better serve our citizens and our residents and our community, then I would like to have a conversation about that, and perhaps that's where we eventually go. Tonight, I'm good with the resolution that we have. I don't want to start playing around with it and, you know, pulling out ink on it. But the last thing I'll say is, we got a comment that basically encouraged the city council to, I'm going to use air quotes, "Stay in our lane and don't be political." I think we've had a community dialogue tonight that brings into sharp relief how actions that happen thousands of miles away, that decisions that are made thousands of miles away impact your neighbors, impact you, and as I said earlier, impact our friends. So I don't think it's political to stand up for our community. I don't think it's political to have this conversation. I don't think it's political for us to get pushed to do better than we're doing. It's okay to push, but I don't think we're being political. I don't think we're piling on. I think we're doing what's right for our community, not doing it all tonight, but it's a start. And we're doing it for the guy that got picked up just waiting for a ride to work at Thrifty Wash. We're doing it for the gardeners that ride their bikes to the landscape job so that they can go out at 7:00 in the morning and do the work that a lot of other people don't want to do. And finally, let's not forget that the value of immigrants goes far beyond their labor. They are our community. They are our families, and yes, they're our friends.
Mayor, for Tim.
Thank you. So since February, there's been, on average, about 15,000 people a month deported. During the Obama administration, in the high point, there was about over 30,000 a month deported. And yet, it feels incredibly differently. And what's different is, at that time in the Obama administration, it was the, there was a focus on criminal deportations. Here, it feels indiscriminate. It feels cruel. It feels racist. And that's the point in many ways. The point of a lot of that is, in a sense, to induce the terror. It's not necessarily the sheer numbers of deportees. It's the, you know, the widespread fear that it induces. When Mr. Trump was first elected, he emphasized, you know, it's the race, it's the, excuse me, it's the, oops, probably slipped, it's the rapists, it's murderers. And he didn't say, we're going after the grandmothers and we're going after the children. That seems to have changed, in practice at least. Some folks make this point, that they say, well, the people who are here, those people who are being deported, they're criminals because they're undocumented and that that's the justification. That alone is sufficient. You know, I'm reminded that if you look at our history, the Irish were fleeing the potato famine in the 1800s. We had no limits on who could come. There were no limits, and anyone who, all those people starving, found refuge in the United States. In the 19, there was a revolution in Germany in 1948. All those people could flee, and it failed, could come to the United States and find refuge, could find sanctuary here, they could find asylum here. Italians, let's say, seeking better lives, better opportunities between 1890 and 1920, no limits, basically, on how many could come here. Jews fleeing from pogroms in the same period, 1880s, 1890s to 1920. They could come without any restrictions. They had to show that they would get a job, but there weren't numerical quotas. We added those, only starting, really, aside from the Chinese Exclusionary Act, we added those mostly in the 1920s. And I guess, you know, when you ask yourself what policies you want to be proud of, do you want to feel good about the fact that we had what sounds like open borders in the 1910, 1920, or we allowed the Jews in Germany to die in the Holocaust because we had quotas restricting them from coming over? Which policy feels better? Which policy are we going to be more proud of? Keeping people who are fleeing persecution, who are fleeing terror in their countries to die, or allowing our country to be this refuge, to be this place where people could come? When I grew up, America was called the melting pot. America was a land of immigrants. America was where, one of the only countries in the world where anyone could essentially be an American. You could be from any place in the world, and when you're here, you're an American. Other countries, if you, you know, it looked different. You go to Japan, most of the people look unlike, let's say, you know, somebody from Scandinavia or Peru or whatever it might be. The United States was special. And that's what, in some ways, that's who we are. We're the land of immigrants, and I just don't understand the point of view of that make America great in some ways is to what? That to reflect that we, all those people didn't immigrate here? That what is, I don't even understand what it really, the goal really means. The people coming here to work are not criminals. They're coming here for jobs. The fact that the United States couldn't figure out since the 1980s how to come up with a legislation, a plan for immigration, that's not their fault. That's our ineptitude. That's the politicization of policy. We've had an asylum system that everyone knows is broken, where people come and we haven't had enough judges to deal with all those people. It wasn't a surprise, and it's been allowed to fester, and there are consequences when we don't do our job, when the government fails to do our job. I guess one or two other just observations, really. If you, one of the ideas that people express is this idea that undocumented workers are taking something out, they're taking resources and so forth. Those people who are undocumented still have to pay. When they get a paycheck, they have to pay social security. They have to pay Medicare. In fact, $26 billion is going to social security from those people who are undocumented. They're not eligible to receive any of that money. So if you're talking about what are the budget consequences of the undocumented, it's going to be devastating. It's going to be devastating in terms of the economy to remove these people who are working in the fields, working in the slaughterhouses, as well as, you know, all the other places that are. So I guess, you know, I wish our policy weren't so stupid, frankly. But the unfortunate thing is, what I described in the beginning about the level of deportation, what is challenging, what is problematic, is that that reflects the current budgets and the recent, I can't bring myself to use the phrase that they like to use, the reconciliation big bill or the big bowl of bull, whatever you want. They have $50 billion in there for ICE. And so a lot of the stories that we're telling, a lot of the things that we're discussing right now as far as whether there's coordination with the local sheriffs or not, all of that stuff is largely going to be put, is going to be changed. The context of the situation is going to be very different because with that amount of money, and it's going to be the biggest law enforcement agency in the federal government, ICE, they will have, they will change the table, you know, as far as who they can deport and how they deport. All of that is going to be very different. All of this is to say, as I said before, this is the start of the conversation. This is not the end of the conversation, that we're going to have just a continual discussion on this. I guess, two other things. The, just in general, the state of emergency, I just wanted to clarify, when we've had state of emergencies, a lot of the time before, it's been as a way to unlock some sort of federal funds, that it's, you know, we declare that, and therefore FEMA makes loans and grants available. I don't know if there's some comparable source, or some, you know, state money or some other source by us saying this is a state of emergency, that it changes anything from the ordinance that we have here or the proclamation that we have here. And just to get some future, we're not changing the proclamation now, but just to clarify, if there's some meaning to it, if there's some additional money or different resources that we could get, mental health services or something. And as far as the mental health services or something. And as far as the source of money, I support the proclamation. As far as the source of the money, though, I don't think it should all come from the childcare. I think both, both human services and economic development made their decisions as far as where the best source of the revenue should go in their committees. And so it's not distinct for human services, that their money is just floating around. The more money you take from childcare, the more it's going to get, you're taking away, you know, the muscle, so to speak. You can't just pull all that money out of childcare and expect that it's not going to have a consequence. I would argue that the money should be split with, or the economic development should look for, among its funding, child, human services should look in its funding. If you want to be able to get more money, you've got to be able to take it from more than one source. And as was pointed out, childcare is going to be helping those children who are affected also. I could, you know, I don't think, for instance, if we're looking at priorities, where our priorities are, advertising that GLEDA is a tech hub is not, to me, one of our greatest priorities. If you're saying to me, do I think childcare money, or, you know, giving money to advertise that we're a technological hub, I don't see any comparison. And do we need three Meet Me in Old Towns? I don't think so. So if, you know, if you're looking at where are the highest priority places to cut the money, I don't think it should all come from human services and childcare. I think a lot of that money is important in childcare. But otherwise, I support the proclamation and, you know, happy to see it move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes, thank you. I want to just thank my council members for their eloquent comments. And it's true, the federal government's made a, made a choice in terms of how they're pursuing enforcement. The Trump administration holds both houses of Congress and the presidency. They could pass comprehensive immigration reform, but they're making an active choice not to do so. They could make policy that's good for business and is aligned with all different types of interests, where we could really unify and come together. And federal agents could focus their law enforcement resources in targeted ways for real concerns. And that, that is a choice that they have made. And so we are, we are forced to act in response. So I would, I would support the, the number of $100,000. I would, I would urge us to empower the Human Services Committee to act without needing to return to counsel, to move swiftly in terms of, of taking action, just because I'm concerned about time. And so I hope we can come to a consensus here and to empower that committee to act. I, I like the idea of sort of calling for local GLEDA nonprofits. I think we just want to be, we'd want to be clear about like the purpose, the purpose and the goal, and just being mindful of their time, limited time and resources, that we would be sort of very concrete about the purpose of that sort of gathering, just because I know that there are already so many like meetings and coalitions and things happening, so that we're not, you know, duplicating efforts that are already taking place. But, you know, that might be something good to sort of hash out in committee and get some feedback from those nonprofits about what would make sense. So, that's, yes.
Okay. Yes. Well, I'm going to jump in real quick. And I promise to be brief. First of all, again, I think it was fabulous to have so many people turn out. I didn't know. I mean, we pulled this together in really a record amount of time, but the last meeting, last Tuesday, we all agreed that we needed to have a special meeting that would just be about this topic. And we did it. We, you know, with the help of staff and, and you all showed up. And that means a lot. We had great speakers to talk about different topics of their expertise. So we learned a lot. It was helpful to counsel. We got information for the public and hopefully, we answered some of your questions. So that was the intent. And also to, the idea of a resolution at the time, we thought maybe that would be stronger than a proclamation. But I'm, I'm fine with looking at, I don't, I support this resolution. But I would look at moving forward, the possibility of looking into a proclamation. You know, I like the idea also of, and it's something I had thought about, I mentioned it with our city manager, was more of a regional gathering, of regional leaders to all be talking on a regular basis of what we can all do together. Because I've seen it with, I'm on the homelessness committee, and when we have our regional committee meetings, we learn so much from each other and we help each other out. So I think that's a really, really good idea. I definitely support that. I would say, look into the situation of filing a legal suit. What would that mean? I'd be interested in just like, looking at it. I'm not saying do it. I'm just saying, let's see what we can, we can learn about the others that are moving forward with it, and see if there's a spot for us in there. I also definitely support the increase, the 75,000 to 100,000. I'm not sure what I think about where it should come from, to be honest with you. Because when a lot of these grants were, were, you know, earmarked for, so much for human services, so more for economic development, it was also spoken, we spoke about the need, that needs change. And sometimes you need to change your focus on where you originally thought that money should go, into going into another area. So I just think increasing it by 100, increasing it to 100,000 is something I could support. I'm trying to think of what else was mentioned. But I also will say that, you know, I didn't expect this to be the last meeting, or the last word. I knew this was kind of the beginning, because unfortunately, new things are going to develop. And I hate saying this, because I'm usually an optimistic person, but I'm fearful that things will get worse. I feel it in my gut. And so to hear all of your conversations and all that you had to say was really encouraging, that we need, we need to and should and will do more. So just know that we need to stay engaged. We need to all work together as a community. We're, we're all on the same page. And how we get there will take some time to figure it all out. But I think this was a good start. I really do. I'm really, really glad we did this this evening. And I can't thank staff enough for pulling together. So I will be supporting the resolution. And I think that's all I had to say. Councilmember Reyes Martin?
Thank you.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I'm so glad I didn't have to follow you. Was that powerful, or was that powerful?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Proti. Just to second a couple of things I've heard from my colleagues. I also support having our city attorney or staff come back with more information about whether it makes sense to do an amicus brief, or what, what the appropriate venue is to support that lawsuit, in a way that doesn't undermine their, their efforts, but is truly supportive. I like the idea that Councilmember Kurayoko mentioned about space at the community center for not just food storage, but really, I know that they are storing things like diapers and other kinds of basic needs. I'm familiar with the concept. At Santa Barbara City College, they have their basic needs pantry at a couple campuses. So something like that, I support, looking into how we can be supportive in that way for folks in GLEDA to have better access. And that's another way to work alongside organizations that are already doing this mutual aid work. In, in the, in responding to kind of the sense of urgency, I do still continue to support the Human Services Committee to move forward with 100,000, so we can get going. I'm not at all opposed to other committees, including the Economic Development Committee, to consider what, what more they can, they can contribute as, as needs come up. For example, at our meeting, we mentioned there are some POP grant applicants who, things changed and they no longer need that grant, so we're going to need to either reallocate those funds to something else. That could be something the committee could look at. I'm, I'm more than happy to have a conversation to relook at our plans and see what more can be contributed from that committee. But I think, right now, in the short term, immediate, I think the Human Services Committee is best positioned to move forward with that 100,000. And I would ask staff, maybe in terms of the timeline, I really take to heart Councilmember Smith's comments about how to move fast. So I just want maybe some staff input on what a process looks like for that.
Oh, Councilmember Kurayoko. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the interest of time, I'll just say ditto to everything that was just said. And then I'll just add, you know, there are, there are things happening in Old Town that are really important for the businesses. And I don't want to do anything that would short circuit the things that we're trying to do to support the businesses. The other thing I'll say is that Old Town deserves to experience some joy. I'm worried about what would happen if we start picking at sources of revenue that aren't as robust as others, and how that might impact Mexican Independence Day. I think we need to have a plan for how we're going to make sure that's a safe and family-friendly community event that is protected. There are other parts of this community that have summer concert series. When I go to those concerts, I don't often see a lot of my Old Town neighbors. And there's going to be six summer concerts. I don't think it's unreasonable for Old Town to have three. So I just want to kind of put that out there. I don't necessarily want to take things away from Old Town, who, a lot of folks that live in Old Town are impacted folks, in order to try and kind of solve a problem that I think we're going to be addressing through other means. I'm open to the Economic Development Committee budget, playing a role. As Councilmember Reyes Martin said, I'm, I'm open to the different committees, all playing a part. But I do agree with Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Reyes Martin, that we need to move quickly. And the health, the, the Human Services Commission seems to be the best vehicle for that. I'm also just saying, we have a two-year budget, and there's a lot of money in the second year budget for childcare, too. So like, we can, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can, we can figure this out. I'm confident staff can help us with that.
Mayor Proti, Kasdan.
Yeah, just with regards to that observation, as far as economic development versus human services, that is to say, whether, whether childcare, of all things, is the best place to cut money from, I'm just, I'm surprised, you know, that it is something, we've not been doing childcare and that program, that program have worked for very long. This is the second year. It's only just being established. Now, I'm not saying it shouldn't contribute, it shouldn't be a player in doing it, because it is new and we have some opportunity where we haven't committed some money and so forth. But the idea that the money going to some of the things in economic development is somehow, shouldn't be considered, is sacrosackled in some ways. Let me give you an example. You had mentioned Mexican Independence Day. You know, if I think of one place where people would not want to congregate, and it's after everything we've heard, it would be going to, you know, it's like we're creating a trap. I mean, it's something that we would, we should at least be really thoughtful about sponsoring something like that, and like, luring ICE there or something. It's a public space. I don't, other cities have canceled their Mexican Independence Day events. So, you know, you, so that's, that's one thing to think about. The other is, like I said, advertising GLEDA as a, giving money to a broader coalition to advertise that we're a tech, that there's a lot of technology here. To me, the only thing that that does, as I've mentioned, is to potentially make our real estate more expensive when companies come here. So the idea that we're going to spend money in order to increase rents for property owners, I don't see why that would be a priority over childcare. And...
Councilmember Kasdan, just a point of order. You're, you're envisioning decisions that haven't happened, and recommendations that haven't happened, and treating them like they have already occurred. And I do not appreciate that.
Well, let me put it this way, then. Let me clarify, or let me understand. I had been taken, understood from Councilmember Reyes Martin, that it's already been more or less done. And, okay, so if the money hasn't already been allocated, and it's still uncommitted, and it's still ready for decision-making, that means it's available to use for this program as well. That means it's uncommitted and it's available to be used. Okay, then why would we take 100,000 out of childcare and not commit money specifically out of others?
Because there's twice as much money in that fund as there is in the other one. And we have not done a lot on economic development for a long time. And by the way, that impacts and supports a lot of lower-income business owners, including immigrant business owners.
But that's the point. Some of it does. You set priorities. The money that's going for those most vulnerable, the money that's going to those who have the greatest needs, you say we're not going to touch. But the money that's going for other purposes, that's what you go after. And I'm not saying that human services shouldn't contribute a significant amount, a fair amount. But I do think we want to make clear that it's not, that childcare is not the, the main focus of where we're going to get money for these efforts.
Councilmember Reyes Martin.
I, I, I think we are going to disagree. And I have heard at least three of my colleagues agree with what's, one of the suggestions in the staff report to move forward with having the Human Services Committee move forward. I've suggested 100,000. I've heard at least two of my colleagues say that. The childcare funding is also within the Human Services Committee, so there is alignment there as well. I don't think anyone up here has said that the Economic Development Committee and the funding that is there would not also be up for grabs. I've certainly not said that. I'm happy to have that conversation with committee. So I, I feel like we have enough council direction that we can move forward. It's, it's late, and I, I don't think we're having a productive discussion by just going back and forth when it's, it's clear we just have a disagreement.
And I would have to agree with you. It's not productive to be going back and forth. And the reason I would support this is because of the sense of urgency, and I don't want to hold it up any longer. That's why I would probably, how do we do this, though? Do we take that part out of the, if there's a, a situation where we're not sure where the money's going to come from, what committee, what your recommendation, do we pull that item? That's a legal question, I guess.
Yes, and I may look to Mr. Nisbet as well for some of the practical realities. But I think, Mayor, to the extent ultimately council decides on a motion that includes all six of the recommendations, the sixth recommendation would include the council's decision with respect to the amount. So if it's 100,000, if it's going to the Human Services Subcommittee. And I think the, the additional point that's been raised by some members is whether the Human Services Committee is then empowered by the full council to dole out that money with, with a number of limited conditions, consistent with council's direction.
So we don't take that separately. We just add...
A council could. It could... It could be part of the same action item if there's, if there's a recommendation associated with all six of those conditions. Council could take that separately if they so choose. I think it's up to the body.
Okay. I can try to make a motion if we're. Okay, and, and, and why don't we take that one first? We have two motions needed. One is on the resolution, which I feel very strongly, and I hope you all agree, that we each take a piece of it and read it. I think it's worth reading out loud in our motion. And then we look at, oh, I guess that, no, it would be B then, right? Direct the city manager to update the proposal action. So let's do A first. Okay? So.
Do you want to do the motion first and then read it?
Yeah, I think that's probably good.
So I'll move that we adopt resolution number 25, next in line, entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Goleta, California, Making a Call to Action to All of Its Federally Elected Representatives in Congress to Advocate on Behalf of Immigrants Who Reside and Work in the City of Goleta."
Okay. And so, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmember members. Please remember to lock in your votes. Beginning with councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuriako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protemporakasdan?
Aye.
Mayor Proti?
Aye. Okay. Eyes have it. We did that. So I'm going to start off with reading again, a resolution, oh, wait, we need to do a roll call vote. Oh, we just did that. Okay, it's late. I'm getting, this is different for me to do a resolution. We don't usually do it this way. A resolution, a resolution number 25-30. "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Goleta, California, Making a Call to Action to All of Its Federally Elected Representatives in Congress to Advocate on Behalf of Immigrants Who Reside and Work in the City of Goleta. Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Goleta as follows." Who has the second section?
That's me. So, Section 1 findings. "In recent weeks, elected officials throughout the country, and especially in California, have objected to immigration enforcement actions by the federal administration that many describe as unethical, immoral, and potentially illegal. As recently as July 10, 2025, United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, ICE agents, conducted an immigration raid at Farms and Carpinteria in Camarillo, arresting over 300 people and detaining about 14 minor children. Protesters were also unseen and caught in the chaos of the situation. The mayor and city council members of the City of Goleta have heard the community's concern through protests, social media, and many other public comments regarding ICE's presence in the city and the desire to unite and collectively demonstrate they are willing, able, and prepared to do more to respond to the significant public outcry and assist within their authority and jurisdiction."
"As a result of the recent ICE raids, there have been noticeable negative economic and social impacts to the community, as fewer people are frequenting commercial and retail establishments for fear of being targeted by ICE. While President Trump has promised that federal immigration enforcement would focus on targeting criminals, the City of Goleta has heard stories of racial profiling, arresting people without criminal records, and uneven enforcement. Given that uncertainty about federal immigration enforcement operations creates fear in the community, the city council desires to learn more about recent operations by directing staff to submit Freedom of Information Act requests to ICE and other federal agencies."
"Section 2, A Call to Action to All Federal Elected Representatives to Advocate for the People of Goleta. A, the city council hereby calls upon all of its federal elected representatives in Congress to advocate on behalf of the people of Goleta, including advocating on behalf of immigrants who reside and work in the City of Goleta."
"The city council calls upon its federal elected representatives," side note, one of which who is our neighbor, "to insist that ICE and federal enforcement officers comply with," there's a citation to the federal regulation, "to ensure that such officers properly identify themselves as immigration officers as soon as it's practical and safe to do so, who are authorized to execute an arrest and state that the person they are detaining is under arrest and provide a reason for their arrest. The city council hereby directs staff to send a copy of this resolution to all elected members of Congress whose jurisdiction covers any part of the City of Goleta."
Okay, so passed and approved, adopted on the city council by the City of Goleta at a special meeting held today, this 21st day of July 2025. Thank you. Now you can clap.
I can try with our next motion?
Okay.
So I would move that we, I guess it's direct our city manager on the one through six items in our staff report. I'll briefly say, one is to work closely with regional partners, including the County of Santa Barbara and South County cities. I think we talked about that. Two is submitting Freedom of Information Act requests on the federal government seeking access to ICE records on raids and enforcement actions. Three is to follow, support, and advocate for state legislation aimed at addressing recent ICE activities. And we have listed the following state bills. SB 627 by Senator Weiner, which would prohibit law enforcement officers from wearing any mask or otherwise conceal their identity. SB 580 by Senator Durazo would require the California Attorney General to publish model policies that cover agency interactions with immigration authorities. And SB 805 by Senator Sasha Rene Perez, who would, which would expand the crime of impersonating public officials, including peace officers and government employees. Also requires law enforcement personnel to visibly display their name or badge number while on duty. And number four is to work with regional federal representatives, including Congressman Salud Carvajal, on efforts, including Senator Padilla's bill, 2021, a bill to amend a section of Immigration Nationality Act to require all immigration enforcement officers to display visible identification. Number five is to track lawsuits filed by the ACLU and other entities, which we've talked about. And number six is to provide funding from the city council. And I would amend that one to be the $100,000 from childcare initiatives administered by the Human Services Council Subcommittee and that that Subcommittee be authorized to distribute those funds. What else? There was also the, oh, to have staff look into space at the community center. What else?
The body cameras?
I don't know, did we talk through that one? You want to do this part first?
Did we have, did we have concurrence to include that?
We didn't discuss that.
I don't know that that's, is that something we do? I mean, that you asked of them?
That we direct our city manager to work with law enforcement to try and figure that out.
Discuss it or?
Yeah, discuss it.
Sure.
I'm okay with that.
Discuss it.
Discuss it.
Yeah.
I'll accept that. And then I saw councilmember Smith's second?
I'll second.
And the other part, the other part was to direct the city manager to, as part of the next sheriff's contract, to, to explore ways that we can insert language that would allow them to have clarity on how to protect our community members. Keyword being explore.
I would.
Is that being added to the motion?
Yeah, so I.
I think it's fine. These are the things I had brought up.
I think for our motion making in our second, just to ensure we've captured everything as part of the subsequent discussion. So we have councilmember Reyes Martin's motion on one through six. That includes an amendment to staff's recommendation that 100,000 be taken from the childcare initiatives, goes to the Human Services Committee. And they are empowered by council as part of this motion to release that funding consistent with council's intent. There was a request from councilmember Kuriako to add to that motion to have staff look into providing food storage at the.
Not just food storage, storage and supplies.
Storage and supplies at the community center, as well as a request that the city manager discuss both body worn camera footage and look into avenues during the next round of sheriff contract negotiations to review the items discussed this evening. So with those additions, I'd ask for a verbal confirmation from the motion maker in the second.
Yes. Yes, I accept those amendments.
Okay, then we can do roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Please remember to lock in your votes once again. Beginning with councilmember Reyes Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kuriako?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protemporakasdan?
Aye.
Mayor Proti?
Aye. I did vote, I just didn't lock it in. Okay, all right.
And Madam Mayor, I did hear a question about swiftness and how fast possibly we could get a committee meeting set. So I was texting with our deputy city manager. So possibly this week, if the committee members are available. We only need 24-hour notice. I was thinking though, probably next week, but we'll look into doing that as fast as possible with the direction to flesh out the details and make a decision on how to allocate those funds appropriated tonight.
And I just also wanted to know, Ms. Kai and I heard the request to look into the ACLU lawsuit and bring the council back information on the amicus brief and the considerations associated with a potential joiner of that lawsuit.
Thank you.
I did hear one more thing too. It didn't have to be in the motion, but councilmember Reyes Martin made the suggestion, maybe look into the idea of a round table. It didn't get completely fleshed out, but councilmember Smith said that the committee could also talk about that. So we'll make sure that's in the staff report and just have some ideas there about whether that gains momentum or not at the committee.
I did just want to again say a big thank you to staff. I know this was a really big work effort. And thank you to Ms. Kai. I know we didn't get to hear from you, but I know you were so instrumental in a lot of this. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope you heard all of the community and they appreciate you as well.
Yay, okay. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. We had done earlier than I thought.